All right, thank you. Okay, welcome to the November 8th, 2017 Neshoba Regional School Committee Regular Meeting. Calling me to order at 6 o'clock. We've got citizens' comments on tap. Do we have any citizens with comments?
No.
We have citizens though.
I know you're a citizen. Thumbs up on that.
And no comments.
Good on the city.
No comments, all right, thank you.
You may not comment now though.
Okay, so I've got a couple of quick updates on the Nen-Ni-Bi-Ni, Don't Make Fun of Me, We are, the Neshoba Regional High School Advisory Committee is going to prepare or and present their findings and recommendations at our next meeting. So that's gonna move again from January back to November 29th at the next meeting. Meeting minutes, how's everybody's meeting minutes? Are we good? Are we up to date?
We're good.
Awesome, good, thank you, thank you. And does anyone have any tri-town agendas, agenda items for next Wednesday? Next Wednesday's tri-town?
Fifteen.
Excuse me, because if you do, would you please funnel them to me and I'll get them over? I think we're getting close to the deadline to have those.
Oh, okay. It's in Stowe.
It's in Stowe, 7 o'clock. MASC conference, so I know Mark and Steve both went and wondering if you would just share a couple of quick updates on what the more compelling components of what you learned were this year, just with the rest of the committee. And I'm putting you on the spot.
Yes, I'm extemporous.
And I'm happy to help out, can I join in? Yeah, you can join in too.
I attended a thoughtful perspective session on Popev, other post-employee benefits, so different groups of people speaking and that was just thoughtful, have a different angle on it. And there are some materials and I think they'll be emailed out from, or available through MASC presentation materials there. Set in on a session in which was discussion about opportunities for looking at costs, savings, and actually Superintendent Ashland was one of the members of that table. And other numerous conversations with other school committee members throughout the state, of which one reassuring feeling as a consequence was the feeling that problems we face are extremely similar to many other committees, they're not unique, and so there's much opportunity to share pleasure of solving them as well as difficulties.
Well, that's good. Not really, but at least we're not alone.
Right, reassuring to know that. I went to the MARS, which is the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, meeting in the morning, the first morning on Wednesday, and there was a very thoughtful presentation about how the state process for foundation budgets, level setting for various towns has, can cause some disparity in how towns get assessed, that the school committee has no control over where the state is trying to catch up and make somewhat more equitable relationship between income in the towns and the assessed value of the towns. It's clearly a topic in Wachusett where they've had one town perennially turning down budgets. And it turns out a lot of the cause has to do with this leveling process where through no control of the school committee's part, states are asking that town to step up and
Really?
become more equitably. So that was informative and interesting.
That's a good one. We also, all three of us went to the one MSBA session as well. I thought that was really good, I really enjoyed that session.
The other session that stands out for me was the one on opioid addiction. I don't know if, I didn't see, it was a packed ballroom, you could've been lost in there, but it was an amazing session. And John Kelly spoke, Dr. John Kelly from Harvard, and really unemotional, just like, here's just the facts, and it was just like, oh my goodness. Mary and Ryan spoke at that as well, that was also a really, really good session. Jeff Wilson, we were all there for dinner Wednesday when Jeff Wilson presented, and kind of gave a bit of an update from the department lens, and I thought that was, that was good. We had a couple of different speakers that night. Julie Hackett spoke, and then there was a guest speaker that spoke about civility. That was also an interesting, that was a very interesting session too.
It's a timely topic.
Yeah, it was really good. Overall, I thought it was, I thought it was a great conference, I mean, I certainly got a lot out of it, so.
Steve, do you have a?
I thought it was very good too. I remember, the keynote speaker, legged.
Oh, right, pill diet.
Was very, was very, very good.
Yeah.
If you're not, if you're not doing what you need to do tomorrow, then you're already six weeks behind, kind of thing. On computerization and using computerization to teach. And basically talking a lot about the idea that machines are gonna do it all in the future, a lot, pretty much. Mark and I tended to go to some of the same sessions on finance and those kinds of issues, and the MSBA one was very good. It's a long process. I was, I was kind of taken aback a little bit by the length of process and the fact that most school districts that submit an SOI to MSBA have to come back two, three, four, five times before their SOI is even accepted for consideration. So that was, that was an opportunity, but a lot, I was very impressed with the conference overall.
Good.
That was insane, it was great.
Okay, thank you. Isabel, do you have something for us?
Barely. So, the bands, the music department just had their concerts, and musical's not for a few weeks, or the fall play isn't for a few weeks, so there's not much there, and the athletics update was stolen by Ms. Rich, so she's actually, she's gonna be a real one today, like, she knows way more than I do. So, I just wanted to say that we have three teams that are playing playoff games this week, so field hockey's playing tomorrow night, as well as girls soccer, and then football's playing Saturday, which you'll hear more about. And Neshoba just ended the first quarter, we have a half-day and have a few days off this week for parent teacher conferences, but besides that.
Is it?
Yeah.
All right, when is the, the fall play?
The fall play is the 17th and 18th, I believe.
Okay, that's a great show, by the way, noises off, it's fun, it's smart, it's...
The other school committee meeting before is like closer to that date, so I wanted to push that announcement.
Oh, okay, I won't say anything more about it, so let me do that. Okay, alrighty then. Anything else, Isabel?
No.
Thank you, thank you so much. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, you bet. So I'm, I'm gonna ask Rob Friesrich to come to the table, and Anne Marie Stoica, Anne Marie, of course, is well-known to us, she is our Director of Human Resources, and I'm gonna kind of tee it up a little bit, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Anne Marie, and then we'll, we'll give kind of a couple of concluding remarks. So we know that we've been through quite a process for our director facilities, and we went out to look and brought a number of different folks in for interviews, didn't feel that we found the right fit, we went back out again, and through that process, Rob kind of appeared. And I'm gonna speak a little bit more about that in a minute, but I think Anne Marie, you're gonna introduce him, and then I'm gonna go back after a couple of comments.
I'm actually delighted to introduce Rob Friesrich to those of you who don't know him already, who's been appointed as our interim facilities director effective tomorrow. We're greeting him tomorrow morning.
Congratulations.
And right now, he's our head custodian for grounds and maintenance. Before he came into Neshoba, he was the assistant superintendent at the Mount Pleasant Country Club in Boylston, he worked at a country club in Uxbridge, and he worked at the Pleasant Valley Country Club in Sutton, which you know was for many years a stop on the PGA Tour, so it was like top-notch. He's taken turf management courses at the Stockbury School of Agriculture, and Mas Gamers. When we, we had our initial posting, we had 11 candidates, and we interviewed five, and we're like, hmm. We reposted, and we got another nine or 10 applicants, and we interviewed four of them. And then we really found that the best to offer was right in our own backyard, right in the family already. So, it is interview Rob and trust us with his initiative, his eagerness to embrace the responsibilities of the new position, also his, his vision for the facilities department, and his knowledge of our custodial staff, our school buildings, and our, and our school campuses. So, this is Rob, and we are delighted to have him.
So I'm gonna, I'll speak to, about a couple of things too. So, Rob, of course, was monitoring the process through, and I don't think initially he had, I don't know whether initially he thought about joining the process or not, then he came to see me one day, and he said, you know, Brooke, he said, I've been watching this, and I've been thinking a lot about this, and I won't share everything that, that was in that one particular meeting, but he said, one of the things that stood out to me, he said, I know where we were, I know where we are, I know where we're going, I think I can help out. And, you know, we talked a lot about it, even this morning, like I said to Anne Marie, offer him the position, like after we decided that that's the route that we were gonna go. I said, don't let him make a decision until I talk to him, because I wanted to tell him some things this morning. And I'm sure poor Rob sat there and thought, is she trying to discourage me from this? You understand, every mornings in the winter, you're gonna be on the phone with me at 3:30 at work, he's like, are you up to this? You know, and I said, you know, you kind of sell yourself, so as you move into leadership, you kind of sell your soul to the organization, because it requires so much of you, you know? It's not a regular management job. And he said, no, I'm ready for this. And so, when I came in and did the debrief with the team yesterday, after they did all the, because we did, what, four or five interviews yesterday, right? And Rob was in the mix yesterday, and I went around to the team members that had done the interview, and I said, each one of you speak about this and what your thoughts are. And hands down, they all wanted Rob. So, he's coming in, I think you're right, he's, he was family already, and he's taking this big jump with us, and I think we're all ready to help support you and do whatever it takes to make him successful. So we are thrilled to have you on board, Rob, thank you very much.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
So I don't know if you, there's anything that you wanna say a little bit to the school committee?
Yeah, I just, I wanna thank the school committee, you know, for having me tonight. I wanna thank the hiring committee, you know, for giving me a chance, you know, in this position. Thank Superintendent Clancy as well. You know, I look forward to working with the staff, the administration, you know, at the Neshoba, you know, school district, and excited to build new relationships, you know, in the tri-town of Bolton-Stoll-Lancaster, you know, with the administration and the community members. You know, I feel we have, over the past year and a half, you know, I've seen a lot of change, a lot of progress in the facilities department, there's a lot of good programs in place now, you know, and move forward, you know, increase, you know, our goals with the facilities program. We have good head custodial staff, we have good custodial staff downstairs in facilities office, we have Pam Sylvester, program coordinator, kind of behind the scenes, holds everything together for us, and is, you know, one unsung hero that I don't think gets enough recognition, because a lot of people don't see what he does, but Jim Brigham, our electrician, he's kind of the mainstay here, and he's spearheading a lot of projects right now. And without him, this district and this facilities department would be lost. So, if anybody sees Jim, just give him a pat on the back, because he really deserves it, so.
Rob was also the fellow behind each one of those little displays, the fall displays at all the schools. That was his vision, he had an idea about what it could, should look like, and then just one day, I said to him on a football game one day, he said, do you know where all those displays came from? Like, I've noticed them at every school I went on to. And he said, Brooke, I did? I said, you did? Yeah. And that was just your own initiative, and I think, and I said that to you this morning, those are the things that we really, really like about you. So, so we're so excited, Rob. So we thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna just carry it forward with my report. I too was gonna bring up the MASC, MESS conference, and I just thought it was great. And it was really, really nice to have the two, two representatives there, so Mark and Steve, I know that that's, it's a huge part of your life that you leave, like, for three or four days, or go down to that, and when you were talking about long, I thought, days are long, because it's all day and all night, and I think people don't realize what those, those particular conferences are like, because you start out in the early, like, that one session started, I think, at 10 of 8 that one morning, but, and we were still all together at like 10 of 8 that night, and later, so, you know, they're long days, but thank you so much, I really appreciated that. Just wanna talk to, one of the other things that I attend is the Worcester County Superintendent's Roundtable, and these sessions have been really, really good, particularly this year. We had the, the new president of Quincygon talk to us yesterday, just did a great job, and we're always looking, of course, as a school district, to see, can we do something more with dual enrollment and that kind of thing? So, got a couple of ideas, not ready to bring them forward, but it's a lot of really, really rich discussion yesterday on that. Principals meeting, today we had a really interesting presentation, I was talking to Chairman Ramosco about this earlier, we're coming up against within the district more and more vaping. And I guess when I think of vaping, I think of those, those folks who are choosing to vape rather than smoke a real cigarette, and that's kind of unfortunately, naively, kind of where I thought it stopped. And I didn't realize the breadth of this. And as we started looking into it more and more, we thought, you know what, we need to bring an expert in here and talk to us about this. And our own SRO, Casey Cool, also came in this morning, this morning with us, it was an awesome, 20 minutes, half an hour, and, and just talked about it, like, I did not realize, for example, that you could get the marijuana now in the liquid form to smoke from these, and we would never know it, because it's odorless. It was really fascinating, this meeting this morning, and I said to Chairman Ramosco, we might think about just having them come in and do like a mini presentation for the school committee, just as a, bit of a PD moment, it's not something we have to do, but it was definitely of interest, and it's a, maybe not a bad thing to put on air so that, you know, our parents can, can listen to this, because I, I really thought it was only this big an issue, I didn't realize how big the issue was. So, so interesting for us to kind of think on, maybe you couldn't reach out to Chairman Ramosco and some thoughts on that.
Why don't we just add it?
You wanna add it?
I mean, do you guys, what do you think, because?
No, I didn't know you could get the liquid marijuana.
Well, I think things have kind of fast-forwarded.
Right, I wonder how many parents are aware of that, and how do you wanna check for it?
Yeah, and the other thing too, that was abundantly clear, because when, the first time we kind of came up against it in the district, I started to go online and take a look, and I thought, oh my gosh, this is not what I thought it was, it was like, and then she came in this morning, and, but between she and Casey Cool, our SRO, they brought in lots of, like, samples or exemplars, or whatever you wanna call them.
Samples.
Yeah, not that we were able to use of all.
You can all get in trouble with those samples.
You know, it was interesting, she had to shift it around, and you looked, and, I mean, you really, the one, for example, that Casey had, looks like a flash drive, like a flash drive, that you just stick in the air, and then you open it up, and I think it's, the, the top piece looks like a little miniature fuse is what it really looks like, and there's like 60 puffs in it, and it's only this big, I mean, it's amazing, and they're made to look like pens that your kids are carrying in their backpack or in their pocket, and it's just fascinating to, to watch this. So the person that came and spoke to us was from UMass, and just did a really, really good job, just the facts, just quick presentation, just the facts, so, so we can add that.
I think that's, Neil, I think that's what we need, is just the facts.
That's, that's another thing, we, we need to take a look at our policy, which we redid last year.
She actually brought that up, yeah, and we, we actually took a look at it right away today, and there's just one little, but you're absolutely right, there's one little piece there that we, she suggested that we add to it.
Well, not only that, but we have vaping just listed under smoking, as just like a nominal offense, and not the crossover to drug use.
Yeah.
For that. And then I don't know, our athletic director probably explained whether that's getting rolled into the MIAA rules too.
I mean, it is, actually, she had a copy of it today, too.
Yeah, I gave it to Casey this morning, RV's the MIAA rules.
Awesome.
So that's what we've reflected, but before you came, when we made the change, a lot of the MIAA we tried to align with, and I, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the, lastly, I'm gonna ask Tanya to come to the table just for half a minute, and there's a little bit of a flyer here, I'm gonna just distribute, and, so we're gonna talk just really briefly, and Tanya, I'm gonna tee it up, and then I'm gonna kind of turn it over to you. So, you know, in lieu of, it's not really in lieu of, but it's kind of in addition to the notion of a pep rally, I think that the high school is really looking at more of the larger celebration of families coming together, what could that look like? And the notion kind of started last year, like, you know, and I think some kids have come to talk to you or whatnot, some captains have come to talk to you and whatnot, but it didn't get the traction necessarily last year, like it did as it kind of rolled further into the summer, and you start talking about it more and more, and then all of a sudden it was like, yeah, this looks like a really, really good idea. And I, I think the one thing, I would wanna say that I find particularly impressive is the number of individuals or organizations that are volunteering services, or resources, or goods to this event, and so it's, it's really shaping up to be something special. So maybe, Tanya, talk a little, little bit about the history, I know really, you're kind of the, a key person behind the scenes on this, and I know Brian Cody's done a lot of work on this as well, between the two of you, so maybe just talk about it, and then if we've got questions, we can.
Absolutely. So the first time this came about was actually five years ago, when the kids came in and said, can we have a bonfire for homecoming? So I was like, I don't know, like, can we have a fire on campus somewhere?
No.
It wasn't gonna work in the show, but it's gonna cost a lot of money, so then it kind of faded away. Last year, student council wanted to do a bonfire for homecoming, they started in the research, and again, it came to the same roadblocks, where are we gonna have a fire on campus? And what is that gonna look like? So it kind of just faded away last year. It came up again this summer when I was doing my leadership workshop in August, the kid said, you know, Ms. Rich, is there any way, you know, can you try to figure this out? So I said, you know, I'll, I'll look into it. So Brian Cody and I started talking, and we talked to Rob, and we were like, can we burn on campus anywhere? You know, we don't wanna burn our grass fields, because they look fantastic, since Rob has taken over. We don't wanna burn the parking lot, because then we're gonna, you know, ruin the asphalt wherever we do this. So that's when Brian reached out to one of the selectmen in Lancaster, and we started talking about the fairgrounds. A lot of behind-the-scenes meetings and talking to different people, and finally, after a meeting with the selectmen, the Lancaster police, Lancaster fire, members of the Bolton Fairgrounds organization, and the school, we met about two weeks ago, and they said that this is something we can definitely pull off. And a lot of people were stepping up and donating different goods. Lancaster fire's gonna donate a fire truck and fireman to watch the fire. Ryan Aldridge Construction out of Lancaster is helping move Jersey barriers, the stage to the up-front, helping with parking. He got a total trail load of pallets, 53 pallets, for us to use to burn. Youth Football's donating their light towers, so we can have light around the area as well. And those are just a few of the people who have volunteered some time and effort. So then we start talking, okay, let's take this big fall celebration, that's gonna be a community event, and let's tie it together with our pep rally. So we're gonna take it off campus, we're gonna go to the fairgrounds, we're planning on this event to be from 6 to 9 o'clock at night. We're gonna be doing, we got Joel Bates as our emcee and DJ, perfect fit for him. From 6 to 7, we're looking at kind of like, it's almost like just hanging out, we're gonna have some food trucks there, our booster club is involved, we're gonna have yard games, the PE department, we've got can jam, and cornhole, and different, you know, outside activities the kids can play. At 7 o'clock, that's when we're really getting to our pep rally activities. And we're gonna do the same kind of things that we do, that we usually do, we're gonna recognize the band members, the chorus members, our EMTs, and then we go through, I do a recap of all of our fall sports, and recognize all senior athletes for our fall teams. We're also gonna have the football coach speak, and the captain speak, that's always part of our Thanksgiving rally, leading into the Thanksgiving game. Our cheerleaders are gonna be doing some cheers, and hopefully, depending on the grass and the weather, we're gonna have them perform. We're hoping the chorus is gonna sing our national anthem, and the band, the pep band's gonna come and play a few songs as well. So for, from like 7 to 7:30, it's gonna be pep rally events that we recognize and honor the success of all of our fall teams and students. We're also kind of hoping that maybe we announce our senior superlatives, if we have everything ready to go from the yearbook, and that can be like the big announcement of who wins those superlatives. And the kids asked again about, you know, can we do the tug-of-war? And I think as long as the weather is cooperative, we're gonna be able to, because it's always the fall captains versus the staff, and they beat us every year, in a tug-of-war. And then at 7:30, we're gonna light the bonfire, the fire, like I said, the firemen from Lancaster are willing to help us with all that, and then from 7:30 to 9, it's gonna be music playing, and just kind of hanging out, and, you know, and we're hoping that this is a community event, we want families to show up, we want alum to come back, you know, we want community members, we'd love to see you guys there. Just something that we can celebrate everything together as a one whole community event, because we don't get to do that. So we thought this might be a nice way to start something, a new tradition.
Thank you for that. Does anybody have any questions? Neil?
First of all, I love the idea, I know that there's been mixed feelings around.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, you know, change is always evil. I do appreciate the $5 though, per person. I'm thinking, you know, people are coming in from the district, if they wanna bring their kids, which they may wanna have them involved, and that can get pretty pricey if you're bringing a larger family or something in there. And I just, I, you know, so that, I'm just, I don't have any comment beyond that, but just, $5. And then the other thing is, the liability aspect, I know that we're covered for, you know, going out to various events, you know, but are we covered in our insurance policies for this? And if not, do we need to get a one-time event rider?
Well, they showed us that.
We've already done it.
Okay, they've already done it.
I've already worked with Michelle, it's all set, it's, because we had, that had to be part of the rental agreement for the fairgrounds.
Perfect.
So that was taken care of. And as to the $5, we went back and forth with this, because as the first time we're doing it, we thought maybe we could go out and get donations, so there wasn't a cost. But with just getting the okay about two weeks ago, we thought it was too soon to go out and try to get, you know, do a fundraiser to fundraise for this. And there's gonna be expenses for this. I mean, just look at the porter potties to get, you know, to have the event for the fairgrounds, it's $400 for porter potties. You know, the food trucks, there's a minimum that the food trucks in the cell, so we have to work with the food truck companies on that. Right now, I've got some light towers that are being donated, but I think I'm probably gonna have to rent one or two light towers, because we wanna make sure there's enough light. Yes, the fire's gonna provide light, but we wanna make sure there's light in the parking area and around, so we see what everyone is doing. So that's, you know, I would love to say that moving forward, we don't have to have a cost, that, but right now, because it's the first time, we definitely need to start with something to make sure we can cover the cost for that night.
Lynn?
Were you asking if there's a family cap?
Well, I wanted to know the details, but that, that's...
And that's something, I mean, we could definitely, you know, Brian, I could definitely refine the cap, I mean, you know, that's something easy we can do, and, you know, put that together.
So, clearly there's expense with this that's involved in it, and I think the timeline's short, but I'm, I'm with Neil too on the, there's a way to, find a way to raise money.
Absolutely.
For next year, if this is successful, and you guys wanna do it again, well, let's face it, the kids wanna do it again, right?
Yep.
It's their pep rally. If there was a way to do that, or, you know, take a little bit out of somebody's budget, I'm looking at you.
No, and that, and that's our plan, I mean, like I said, it was more of a, we wanted to get this off the ground, we've been talking about it for, like I said, started five years ago, it's more of like, let's, let's, how can we get this done?
I think what I didn't know, because I've heard the same things that Neil, you've heard, is that the kids wanted this.
That's where it came from, first. And I actually met with the fall captains today, and I was like, listen, I said, I know there's a lot of students that are upset, but I said, this came from a group of students, like, I didn't just come up with this random idea, because to have it in the gym, it'd probably be a lot easier to plan. But I said, you guys gotta help out here, and they were all excited, and they said, you know, yes, we're gonna talk to our teams, we're talking to our friends, like, this is a good idea, we did, we did ask for it, we do want it, it would be, I mean, everybody loves a bonfire.
And everybody's included, there's no group that would be excluded?
Correct, everybody's included.
So it's not just sports, it's drumming?
Well, it's the school.
Yeah.
It's the school community.
Yep.
And how about, so...
Some people like Brian Boyle would be there.
Well, specifically, like, kids in the sped program and so forth, I mean, are they gonna have access to be able to get there and participate?
Absolutely. Yep, and I've actually, Brian and I have been working with the best buddies, leaders, because we were talking about, there's been like some ideas around, do we wanna do a pie in the face contest again, and they've done a few years ago, because a few kids keep telling Mr. Cody they wanna shove a pie in his face again.
Everyone wants to shove a pie in him.
You know, everybody wants to throw a pie. So we are trying to figure out if there's something, you know, we wanna do at the fall celebration, but we're also gonna look at doing something for winter and spring seasons too, because most schools do something every season, but right now, we only celebrate the fall, where we should be celebrating the whole year.[1697.33] So we've got that in the back of our pockets trying to plan as well.
Sure.
All right, Isabel?
Oh, just as a student at Neshoba. Also, I'm a class officer at Neshoba, so just like in the sense of people meeting, we were all talked to and the senior class officers were talked to. And I think all the other class officers at their weekly meetings were talked to as well about this idea, kind of trying to suss out if it was going to be a good idea or not. And I know that the rest of, um, my, the rest of our executive were totally agreed and we thought it was a good idea to move forward. So it was definitely, I think that as much as there were a lot of students, um, maybe a little bit upset about it, I think there are a lot more students that were kind of the silent majority in this case that.
So, so it's kind of a Neshoba thing to be community, right? So I would, I'm a guess that you guys would be talking to the kids that have concerns to hear what they are.
Yeah.
And then bring them back to the administration so it can be addressed.
Yeah, we've discussed, it's really, everyone just doesn't like change. Everyone says, but it's always been in the gym.
But this is Neshoba and for the, change is the name of the game. But all right, I, I really appreciate you, your perspective on it and thank you for your efforts. And we're looking forward to seeing the results of it.
Thank you, Tony, I appreciate it.
You got it.
And that's it for my report tonight.
Well, that's good. That was a long one, but it was a good one. No, don't be sorry, it's good. All right, so we're going to move into new business and the appointment.
Yes.
I know, should everybody get up and do a happy day?
Yes.
Or the nurse leader recommendation. So the school committee is responsible for approving the nurse leader. And, um, is this our nurse leader?
This is our nurse leader.
Hi.
Hi. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yay.
Okay, everyone quick before I say something else. You know, but before I introduce you to Lisa, I would tell you, you know, we've, we've joked a lot about me being the interim nurse leader and, you know, going to the nurse leader district meetings and feeling like, you know, one of these things is not like the other and trying to, trying to just keep things. You know, they would talk about some of their nurses thing and be like, oh, that's gross. But the fact is, I got to know the nine nurses of the Neshoba district a little bit better than I had ever before. And I've got to tell you that they are top notch. They're so wonderful. I think really if we didn't have such first rate nurses in each of our schools, we wouldn't have been able to gotten through this period without a nurse leader as smoothly as we did. So I just wanted to give a hats off to our school nurses because they are really very, very, all kidding aside, they are very, very good school nurses. But this is Lisa Brawls, go Becky. She's our new nurse leader slash coordinator of nursing and health. She did some, um, emergency, um, emergency room staff nursing and pediatric, pediatric nurse manager experience. She's worked, uh, most recently as the nurse coordinator for the Lowell Public Health Department. Her duties there were to manage and direct the nursing services for the city of Lowell Health Department. One of her most recent projects was to implement an asthma surveillance program in the Lowell School Health Unit, uh, which resulted actually in a decrease in the number of, um, absences with students, uh, the students with asthma. She's an adjunct nursing professor, a professor at Middlesex Community College. She has some public school classroom experience having taught health assisting at the Greater Lawrence, a vocational technical high school. She has a special interest in disaster and, uh, emergency response. And she actually spent several weeks in New York City at Ground Zero after nine eleven. She's a registered nurse and she's a licensed Massachusetts school nurse. She's a bachelor of science degree from the College of St. Joseph in Cincinnati and a master of science and nursing with a specialization in education from Walden University. And, uh, she was welcomed by the school nurses on Monday on her first day. They, they, um, shared lunch with her and they sent her a beautiful bouquet of flowers to welcome her to the Neshoba district.
And they went, phew.
So we welcome this to Neshoba.
Thank you. Lisa, I, I said to you earlier, I mean, this has been a long search for us. You know, and this school committee knows that this has been a long search for us. And as I had shared with you, we were waiting for you. At the end of the day, we were waiting for you. We, we did a lot of interviews. We, you know, we spent a lot of time, as Anne Marie said, with our other nurses, looking for just that right fit. And I believe with all my heart right now, you are the right fit for us. So we are thrilled to have you on board. Anne Marie is particularly thrilled to pass the nurse's cap back. Yeah, so we thank you so much.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of the district. It's, um, the, I've only been here since Monday, uh, but what a warm welcome, uh, from all staff members. Um, it's been overwhelming, um, the nursing staff, um, already out and running to the schools and, um, they've been very welcoming. They have a lot of, um, great ideas that they want to see happen within their, um, office. But some of them are just absolutely beautiful and they're running smoothly. And I'm looking forward to, um, a lot more, um, interactions with, um, all the community members.
Great. Does anyone have any questions for, for Lisa? Other than we're just also thrilled to have you here? So did I have to ask something? I'm doing this in public, so I'm sorry, but are you from Cincinnati or?
I am not, no. I'm from, I'm from Drake at Mass area. I live in Pelham now. I went out there, um, after traveling around quite a bit and finished my bachelor's degree in nursing there. And I stayed with Shriners Burn Hospital for about a while and I worked there in Boston as well. And then went back for my master's degree in education because it was a, nurses educate every day when they crush the threshold and really liked it with, um, a little bit of curriculum development. So I've taught quite a while too. I taught at Neshoba Regional Technical High School and the health careers, um, for high school students and then at Greater Lawrence as well. And I enjoy the classroom as much as this, but, um, I think a little bit with my own ADHD, I need to be moving more and not in a classroom as much. And I enjoy, um, developing programs. I did a lot for the city of Lowell. Um, we had over thirty schools, sixteen thousand students, so a little bit, um, on a larger scale. But, um, enjoyed those programs, um, to enhance their health, health and wellness, um, in the schools in order to achieve academic success for students.
So that's kind of cool because we love programs that are targeted to student needs. I'll do a quick one and then I'll, um, now, you know, I just got myself thrown off here, so programs. What was I going to say? Neil, go ahead and I'll.
So, um, is this, are you going to be picking up from where things were left off as far as like the, uh, the youth risk survey and some of the mental health things that were being done and so forth?
Yes, I'm trying to filter through all of that now, um, to see where it was completely left off and where I can start and, and pick up from. Um, I've made a lot of outreaches already today, um, uh, to, um, our health, um, e documentation as well as getting Medicaid billing, um, and then moving on to those others. I know a, a big one that I'm hearing, um, buzz is the emergency, um, planning also that, um, schools are asking for. So that, um, is something that I did within the city of Lowell that we worked very hard with over a few years. So I have a lot of resources already in place for that, um, that we can somehow make it fit, um, with what, um, this school district needs are. Because they'll be quite different than.
The other thing I'd say, Neil, too, is, is Donna left really extensive notes. Like really, really extensive, like we're talking like twenty-five pages worth, like.
Yeah, I'm on page like thirteen. But a lot of it identified before, so it's familiar to me where I've been in the nurse leader role in the past and familiar with the grants that we have and things like that. So she made it very smooth for me to come in.
So once you get your, your legs under you, we have an emergency response task force. And I'm assuming Lisa's going to be heading that up?
Yeah, we, we haven't pulled that, that hasn't been as top of a priority right now.
No, no, no.
But yeah.
Completely understand, just, just to raise it so that when you're ready to go, we'll assign someone from the school committee.
It, it, it's also inside that, the diatribe that she's working through right now.
Um, I'm really looking forward to this. Can't wait for you to start.
Yeah, she's doing great.
All right, so.
I think Mark had a question.
Just a comment of welcome. I'm impressed and find it reassuring that you've had a great amount of public health experience as well as, uh, social experience and also in-school experience. So I think, um, great you bring all of these, um, skills and experiences to our school. Just thank you for.
Thank you.
Stepping up to our organization.
Thank you so much. All right, so, um, what do you need from us?
Basically, we're, I'm making the recommendation that we, uh, that we move Lisa's name forward for the position of, uh, district nurse leader for Neshoba Regional School District.
So I think one of the school committee needs to move that. Needs to. So, so what we need to move.
I'm making the recommendation, you, you need to move that.
Right.
And then just move it.
So move. You did.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess, okay, who seconded it? It's like happening. Lisa, clearly, I mean, I mean, this is a formality, right? Steve seconded it. Any questions, comments? So glad you're here. Can't wait to introduce you to the community. Cannot wait. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay. Extended day update. Wonderful, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna have you come to the table. Pat's going to come to the table as well. And do we have, um?
I can plug in there.
Thank you. So Laura, Laura's gonna, yep, she's already got it up there for you. And so, um, both Laura and, uh, Pat are, are gonna go through this, um, and, and, uh, do a bit of a presentation, kind of an update for you and then, uh, open it up to questions. And I think, you know, Pat and I were talking about it earlier. I think that, that we asked that Laura kind of go through everything first and then leave it, leave the questions to the end if we can, just to be convenient in our mind. So Laura, I thought we were going to turn it over to you and if you can get it started, please, that'd be great.
Well, I just want to say thank you. I've been so excited about being able to present about the program that I actually couldn't sleep at night. It was like tossing and turning between looking at my website and the things that people are doing. And so it's, it's, it's nice to be able to share all the fun things that are going on. Okay, so, so that's, I'm just, this one.
I'm going to do a practice one.
No, it's still, that's a little right.
Okay, okay, that was just a practice. Okay, all right, so this is just us. And we did have this little music blob, a blurb to go with it, but Pat said, no, not to do it, although she was humming to it the whole time we were going through the presentation. Okay, this is my, uh, my good friend Lily. Uh, and it's, and I feel like it's my job to ensure that her time at the extended learning program is an opportunity. And I take that very seriously when Lily asks for things. For working families, after-school programs are not part of the solution, they are the solution. Ten years ago, the basic need for after-school programs was simply to provide a safe place for children while their parents worked. Although this need is still an expectation, it is not the only need. Education has changed and so has family dynamics. Schools now have technology, lots of technology, which has added another component to three hours. Working families consist of two working parents. These changes have created a huge opportunity for the extended day programs to step up to the plate and become extended learning programs. It's just some dynamics of, um, of our locations. We have two locations at the center, one in Lancaster, one in Emerson. Each location of our, each town has its own before-school program. And we have three enrichment academies, one during vacation academies. This is our vision. The extended learning program took on this challenge and created a program that is more than a safe place, but an opportunity. One that strives to provide experiences that help its participants to be more confident, more skilled, and better prepared for the future. An à la carte program that offers its participants and parents the choices that they would choose if these opportunities were available during the hours of three to six. A little walk down memory lane here. The program grew. Tuitions increased to reflect the growth. And of course, the numbers increased. But I couldn't do it alone, so I reached out to my parents, my students and community to find out what they wanted and needed in an extended learning program. And through yearly parent-student surveys, observations, conversations and community outreach opportunities, the program evolved, evolved and continues to evolve. What I learned was there was a need for a before-school program, better communication, more effective billing system, a separate program and location for fourth and fifth, fourth and fifth grade students installed. And more enrichment opportunities was also a very popular demand among students, parents and community. These opportunities grew slowly as the system was developed to maintain sustainability for new enrichment component that my parents and students requested. This system required outsourced programs, those that were requested that did not have in-house resources or instructors for these, for instance, like an auditory program or a tennis. We just didn't have an instructor on hand. These programs were offered with a fee. The fee covered the instructor, operational costs and allows a small push to be put back into the extended learning program to cover the cost of half-day presentations. The half-day programs, um, we have almost one a month and they, they're six-hour days. So something to kind of juice it up is nice. Um, these opportunities are optional and all are provided from parent and student requests gathered from yearly surveys, conversations, observations and outreach programs. These opportunities are in addition to the many diverse opportunities that my amazing staff offers daily. Also embedded under the extended learning program are our famous enrichment academies. These two have grown in numbers and popularity. Student requests and community input is just as important as parents. The students ask for it and I try to get it because they are, they are my customers. These are some of the programs, I'm not going to go over them all. I would love to, but, um, these are some of our community outreach programs that are successfully already implemented. Basically, the community just wanted a piece. They wanted to be involved and I loved it and the kids love it. It's a win-win for everyone. Here's a few comments from my parent survey from two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Most of these are, some of them are positive. A lot of these things have already been done. Um, some of them are things that they would like me to do that I may be working on. Some of them I couldn't, swimming classes is a tough one, working on it, that's a tough one. Looking ahead, there's many wonderful things brewing. A tutoring program within the, uh, with the high school, community service component for four and five, a junior shock program. We're having the big Thanksgiving feast in Lancaster next week. Just a few things brewing. This is, um, us, this represents the new, um, billing program, My School Bucks, which has been very, very successful. Um, it features auto pay, ninety percent of our parents are taking part in it and twelve percent of our parents have already paid for the tuition. Here's a few interesting figures, just in case. And the most important part, a day in the life of the extended learning participant. It's an exciting day and it's an exciting life. My students will, would come in, if yours is an extended learning, Pat's going to be our, our model. If she came in, she would be, our staff would greet her. They would take attendance with their handy dandy clipboards. And then they would bring them into their place where they're, um, the cafeteria or the gym, their main headquarters. They would get their bag to put their stuff in. A parent already has a roll bag. Because we don't have lockers or cubbies, we developed this system, parent request. They wanted someplace to, and it's legit, they wanted someplace to put their kids' stuff. That it was off the floor, that if they came in, I mean, I saw parents like digging for shoes. It was heartbreaking. So everything's in here. It's also a great case for an emergency. If a parent comes in and needs to retrieve their children's belongings quickly, there it is. Pat, I can get your stuff, you're out of here. Our administrator needs to come in, so it's really, these bags cost a dollar. And believe it or not, they last all year. So they're, that's been very, very efficient. So they come in, they put their bags in, then they go outside. There's a group that will come in at three thirty if they're participating in, this is the winter schedule. It's a little bit different than, um, the one that was just on the website because I changed it for the winter because of the time change. So if they're participating in an enrichment activity that's outsourced, they come in at from three thirty to four thirty, they'll have their snack and they'll go to, this is STEM that's happening at all the schools right now. That, she does a weekly newsletter, so that's one of the programs they've come in for. If they're not participating in an outsourced program, they stay out till four. Then they come in from four to four fif, four to four fifteen, they have their snack. Then from four fifteen to five fifteen, they have either homework club and enrichment activity that one of my staff is offering because those don't require registration, or free play. And then from five fifteen to five forty-five, there's more free play. And from five forty-five to six, there's cleanup and departure. That schedule is posted on our website. Um, that's the, sorry, that's the, um, the fall one, you'll, in your packet, you'll have the winter one. Um, it's, the site's pretty much following. There might be a little variation, but it's pretty, that's pretty clear so the parents can pick out accordingly. In celebrating success, we've had a lot of successes. These are some of our successes. Um, just to highlight a few things, Bolton is participating in the, our local food drive. They're collecting items for the community. They entered the town scarecrow contest, almost won. It was pretty exciting. They'll be offering again the Red Cross babysitting class, which offers CPR, AED and first aid training for my fourth and fifth grade students. Um, Bolton has its very own destination imagination team, which I hear might win this year. Might go into states, that's their goal. Lancaster has a Thanksgiving family feast happening on the sixteenth. They've assembled a huge bulletin board in the cafeteria, which is a wall of bags. All the children put little feathers on for something they've fangled for. And the whole school's involved. We're all in. So I was very excited about that. The students have formed their own safety committee, which they'll be reporting to me with little reports, weekly reports. I was very excited about that. Stowe has its sewing program, uh, veterans light writing programs going on, theater program, science and STEM program. The new program, HEAL, is booming. All our programs are full. It has a theater program, a sewing, mad sewing on sewing machines, wonderful to see. A mock trial program and a, um, actually a mad science program, which is they're building and doing all kinds of amazing things. So that's been, it's doing really well. My final thoughts. I see the extended learning program as an incredible opportunity. I will continue to provide positive opportunities that empower our students to be confident, productive and motivated individuals. That's a parent comment. And finally, in your packet, I wanted to share and acknowledge my devoted staff, who are truly the superheroes of my program. They impress me every day with their devotion to my students. And finally, what I learned, and my, going to my fifth year as an administrator, a good administrator's staff follows him or her, but a great administrator's staff walks beside him or her. I have, on that, that's it for me. I have a packet for you, which is a printout from the website, our tweets, which if you want to visit, see our real life, the tweets have all pictures from our site. And I included a schedule. My staff emails a weekly schedule to the parents. I include an example of one so they understand what's going on each week. And the picture's worth a thousand words. This was it. This is Susan, who's my side coordinator in Stowe. And she's not reading a story to my little guy. He's a struggling reader. She's encouraging him to read. And I have this in my office because I feel like I've done something right when I see that. So I included that in your packet. Any questions?
Wonderful. Well, I think last year, when you came to present to us, I remember one of the questions was, I just want to know what you do. And I think this year, you really did a great job giving us an overview of what is the program? What are the components of the program? How does it work? So I truly appreciate the overview that you provided. I really do. Anybody have any questions? Other, Neil?
Because it's standard. Laura, you obviously put a ton of work into this, and I really appreciate each year going over this stuff and just seeing how much...
I love it.
Yeah. Now, one of the things we had talked about after the, after the forensic audit was dealing with the fiscal aspect of this being like a standalone type of thing. So I wasn't sure if this was going to be a fiscal presentation or not, but I see that there's some fiscal numbers, there's some numbers that are in here. And specifically, there's one that says extended day, $588,612. I didn't know if that was revenue or cost, because it said an increase of two percent, projected increase. Again, I didn't know if that was cost or revenue.
That, that does represent an increase in the revenue, the projected revenue from last year to this year.
Okay.
So I will tell you right now, without the offset of the revenue source for our regular appropriation, that the program is supporting itself and will continue to do so.
When you say supporting itself, so I think of that as salary benefits?
Yes.
Well, we're not, we're not...
That's not fair.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Facilities?
Yes.
It's a fully loaded cost.
For facilities in the budget this year, if you look at the extended day budget, you will see that there is an allocation for facilities and benefits. Typically, the people that work in that program don't receive benefits because they don't qualify for them, you know, as far as like health insurance goes. But they're only a few people. But as far as facilities costs, we, we share some of the costs.
So it's self-sustaining?
Yes, it is self-sustaining. Yes.
I just want to clarify, it's self-sustaining with the offsets? Or it's, it's going to be self-sustaining as you go forward?
It will, there was an offset in the fiscal year seventeen budget of $215,000. It was a revenue source. And that made it not self-sustaining because that was an expenditure against the revolving fund.
Out of the program and put it into...
Oh, that was, that was...
This year...
Remember, that's the history.
This year, we're on target to make money. I mean, you know, we'll have some, not to make money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We will have money left at the end of the year for startup costs, and that's, that's what our goal is. We don't want the program to be so expensive that, you know...
I didn't know that it was rolling down.
Well, that, that actually, and maybe this is not the time to, we can have this at another level, but...
But, but maybe...
But my question is, because this is something that's, I think, worthy to have, but at the same time, it's, it's self-sustaining. And I'm wondering if there's a way to break it out from the district budget completely so that it's not tied into our budgetary items. And the reason I say that is because if it's broken out and it's set up structurally as a separate entity, then if it's not performing in the future, funds can't be taken from one portion of the district budget and put into that program like they were in the past. And then likewise, it can't be taken out. It protects the program because you can't pull out and do any offsets that way. And that way, great, you're growing, you're growing a little bit of a... You have some reserves, so now you can go back and reassess the costs and perhaps bring costs down based on, you know, I mean, so I think it just gives more, not manipulation, but more, more ability for the program itself to grow and thrive. And at the same time, it protects the district from anything. So I don't know if we can have a conversation offline.
We actually already are in that space because it's running out of revolving fund. So it is on its own entity right now.
But it's part of the budget. I would like to see it taken out.
We follow the revolving fund as well.
Okay.
I'd love to see that taken out.
So I think that's a conversation for budgeting, all right? So you guys take that and have your discussions. Because Pat will be there, too.
I just have something I wanted to bring out. Laura, one of the things that's not being asked, but I know it's been on their minds, is we added a little extra support for your, your unit this year in terms of some admin support. Maybe talk about why you appreciate that or the work that she does.
Two minutes?
Yeah, and I included her in if you wanted to review, too. She's, Leah is been added. Tom and I share her, Chef Tom, and she handles all the financial parts of the program, the billing, anything that has to do with the money, the billing, the registrations and all that. And it's been amazing because that's like an all-day job right there. I mean, even just responding to the emails and the parents, that was something the parents asked for. They wanted a more efficient system, you know, more visible. And we went to the My School Bucks, which they're familiar with, and they wanted a quicker response, you know, time for, you know, questions about their billing, which they get. And they wanted, and from this end, we wanted more spreadsheets and things like that, which this program provides.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you. So Neil, thank you for bringing that up, and I'm going to leave that with you. It's got to be really quick because we're running behind. We've got end caps to get to.
What's ELP?
Extended Learning Program.
Okay.
Sorry. Sorry, I was trying to get out of room.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate you so much. All right, capital plan update. We're going to move into the next area.
So we'll, we'll have you kind of start and just talk it through quickly because we want to get, and get caught up a little bit on time here, Pat.
Sure.
And then I'm just going to add one, one or two quick thoughts at the end.
Okay, so basically, Aliyah's bringing up the spreadsheets right now. What I did was I went through last year's capital plan and compared that to what I had on, as projects for this year. I've gone around to all of the buildings. Some of the work was done by Jeff before he left. Some of the work is continuing to happen.
In progress.
Yeah. Unfortunately, this time of year, everybody is looking for quotes on the same things we are. So for Lancaster, I have a quote. I have a request for fiscal year nineteen that I'm, I'm working on. You can look at the different items. If you have any questions on anything in particular, I'd be happy to answer, answer them. Stowe, still waiting for quotes on three major items. And I just have one that is actually, it's from a previous year. So this is still ongoing in Stowe. Bolton, I'm near complete with everything in Bolton. If you have any questions about any of the items in Bolton, please ask them. I only have, I'm waiting for one capital item. And as far as the high school goes, we have a couple of big items. One of them would be the Leaching Field. That's considered a capital item for the next fiscal year. It may change. I've talked to the DEP. They will review where we are with our high school construction, new construction or not, and, you know, decide whether or not they'll grant us an extension or not if that were to come to fruition. We have some floor repairs and a replacement of hot water tank that is definitely needed and probably should be done as soon as possible. So that will definitely be in the budget for this year as a capital item for the high school. I don't, I don't think it could even wait, to tell you the truth, for the construction project to be completed. As far as district-wide capital, basically, what I have is a couple of items, the replacement of our vehicles. We've looked long and hard at our vehicles and tried to make an assessment of how long they're going to last. I have two vehicles scheduled for fiscal year nineteen. I'm looking for a used facilities vehicle for the facilities director to drive around town with, and of $12,000. And I'm looking for the replacement of the pickup truck, which we have not replaced because we purchased the van last year because that was more of a need. If anybody has any questions about that. One other thing, too, that I wanted to mention, and Brooke, you and I had spoken about this, MSBA...
That's exactly what I was going to bring up. Yeah.
Is about to come out with all of the results of their five-year evaluation. Basically, they came out last fall and they looked at all of our buildings and made an assessment of, you know, the condition that everything's in. And this could work in our favor when it comes time to go before them, you know, with an SOI. I'm hoping that it, you know, it's where we want it to be so that we could, you know, move forward and not have to go through it multiple times as I believe, Mark, you were talking about some...
Actually, it was Steve, yeah.
Oh, it was Steve, oh, Steve, you were talking about that and...
So, and I'll just bring on that, too. So MSBA every five years goes through this cycle, and they're just wrapping up this cycle of this most recent five-year, last year. The results should be finished in about another month to two months. Hopefully, before Christmas. And then it, it'll be posted online so you can kind of take a look. They do it across the Commonwealth for every school building, and so you can go in and take a look. And so as Pat and I were talking, if there's some things in there that they've caught that we haven't, for example, that will pop up and it may end up becoming a number-one priority depending on whatever happens. So, so we're, we're just putting that qualifier out there, that we're presenting this, but knowing full well that MSBA will have something coming forward in that, within the next two months.
So one of the things that I noticed isn't in here are cameras in the high school. And we know there are fewer cameras than the SRO and the school administration would like.
Right, and we put some in this year already. We've already added some.
Well, we needed to add some because there was hardly anything in there, and we need to make sure we're blanketing it, but...
In, in the budget last year, off of this year, I, I put some money to have some, a consultant come in and look at all of the buildings.
The cameras.
All of the cameras in the buildings. And one of the things that I'm looking far from them is what, what exactly is it that we need in each building? I just don't want to say, you know, oh, the principal says we need a camera here, let's throw one here. I want to make sure that we're up to date on the equipment that we're using. So I would like a consultant to look at that first, and I want to spend the money efficiently.
So didn't we have someone do that? Didn't you have a company?
We did a trial.
Yeah, and how did that go? And what's the recommendation for that?
The trial from...
Stowe. Stowe was Hail, I think.
Yeah. That was a couple of years ago?
Last, that was last year.
Was it last year?
That was beyond the last year, yeah.
I'm not sure...
I mean, just not remembering. We'll have to go back and do a quick look at that. But yeah, you're absolutely right, we did that.
Right, because they were going to come in and they were going to do that, and then if we decided to move forward, they were going to charge us for it unless we decided to move forward. And then it was going to be that, they would recoup their costs when they went through the rest of the building.
No, that was technology.
That was computers. That was, right.
Yeah, that's right. That was everyone.
So we have a couple of assessments that we need to...
Well, this was the one that we, that we were going to have this year. This was the assessment of the cameras in particular.
You haven't done this yet?
No, we haven't done this yet. I'm actually looking for one right now. Looking, you know, to see if I can find a couple.
So it's on our radar, it's bottom line.
It's just juggling facilities and... So does anybody have any questions about anything that's on any of these lists?
Yes. So like smoke detectors in Lancaster for Mary Rollinson and Luther, $35,000.
Right.
That seems like really high for replacement because you're not, you're putting the, the actual unit, you're not, I don't think they're, they're not doing new hardwiring, right? I mean, they're not, they're, they're just replacing the unit.
I believe they have to be hardwired.
But they are hardwired. Usually what you're doing is you're replacing, you're not pulling the wiring out, resetting the wiring, you're just replacing the unit. And at $100 a unit, that's 350 units that you could put in those two schools, you know, and 100 is pretty high for, so I, I don't know why that's so high.
What I can say is that we have to pay prevailing wage. We have to bring somebody out with a lab, you know, somebody, an electrician does the work. It's... How many students do? I just had the one.
I mean, Steve will come and do it for much less than that, right?
Yeah, 34.9. Well, my, my question on that, once again, a lot of these things that we're looking at individual, individually, plus the fact that we've either, A, been sold obsolete equipment in the past, as one of the notations here was, it was already obsolete when it was installed. A lot of these things that have some sort of electronic connectivity with a major central kind of system, we really should be making, you don't see that?
No, I'm not understanding, we're not understanding what you're referencing.
It's, it's, it's Stowe, it's the door security system replacement.
Oh, okay. Let us get to that page. Yeah.
We may have to do that this year. So that's why there isn't anything listed as a cost for that.
What happened with the cameras, too? We put analog cameras in after, years after they were digital, and then we went out and sourced an old analog system to work with the cameras, which costs more than replacing everything, so.
We should be looking at some of these things. What I'm trying to indicate is that we should be looking at some of, by some of these things from a systemic point of view, in that looking at ultimately reaching some sort of electronic school or school HVAC, security, voice system, speakers, bells, all of these things as a package at some point, or as components of a package that can be ultimately put together to be, maybe I'm not expressing myself well.
Actually, no, I think, I think I do get what you're saying. And looking at for the school level.
To now do the electronic house, we should be looking far enough ahead to be looking at an electronic school.
Yeah. Right, like smart buildings.
For all of the, all of the pieces that go together.
Yeah. That's an interesting way of looking at it. I, I don't know that we would have thought to have looked at it through that type of lens. That's an interesting approach.
Actually, that's why you have an outdated system at Center.
Yeah.
Because they run the same system.
Okay. Good to know.
But there are some districts that are starting to bring in smart building systems that, as Steve was saying, control, you know, lighting and heating and everything sort of works together. And at that, at a certain point, probably makes sense to look at all these various individual components that need replacing, and are there ways that we can sort of be more efficient about it?
Yeah. Interesting.
I was, I was referencing, I found at Stowe, Center School, that original install, the software was outdated.
Right. That's what we're being told by the vendor who repairs it.
Plus, the original vendor is unable to repair it.
That's correct.
So I'm, I'm saying let's not fall into these kinds of traps again. Let's, kind of let me do like jump ahead to the day after tomorrow rather than looking at tomorrow.
Thank you.
Quick question. Are the town administrators informally advised about the consideration for some of these things in your...
Well, I'm actually meeting with all of them on Monday morning.
All right, so what's our next step on this? Pat's going to continue to...
It's a work in progress.
Right, and I cannot...
It's not going to stop tonight.
No.
No, well, it can't. But, so that's great. So we'll, you'll come back to us with a revised document. To Steve's point, that's a whole shift in the culture of how things have been done, but I don't know how, who, if it's you, if it's... Rob. Rob, but that's a really-
I'm saying, you know, to look at like, the whole system.
Right. I'm clear. Steve, it's clear. I think that's, the point is that it's a valid point, and how do we shift the thinking from the siloed approaches to a more comprehensive solution?
Right, and still be within the procurement laws.
Yeah, but I think Steve's point is well-taken.
It's the product that you're, it's not the procurement laws, it's the products that we're, that we're sourcing.
Right, right.
So, what about, like, DESI has a lot of recommendations for, let's say, technology, and where schools should be, you know, a year from now or two, they're sort of thinking about like, pipelines and all this other stuff, and they have recommendations. I'm wondering, do they have anything like that?
For buildings?
Or some of the other things for buildings? Or do you have like a, like a co-op or anything like that with the schools that you could actually access?
Well, there's a piece of me that's wondering if MSBA doesn't have something.
Sure.
You know, like, I'm just thinking, I wonder if we shouldn't give Diane Sullivan a call and talk to her about this, and see what other buildings, to your point, what other cohorts are doing. So, great suggestion, thank you. Pat, thanks, this is a lot of work, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, we're gonna invite Ms. Rich, athletic director, back to the table for an athletics update.
And I believe this is the birthday girl.
All right, well, happy birthday, and now save us a bunch of gas, sister. It's August, thank you!
Go easy.
Happy birthday, Jonathan, thank you. So, thank you for having me here tonight. I did the fall, I think there's an update that's in your packets, however, we do have some updates too, since last Friday. So, our field hockey team is moving on to their fourth consecutive district final game tomorrow night. Neshoba defeated Groton Dunsborough seven and one in the quarterfinals, and then beat Wachusett four and two last night in the semis. And now they're gonna be playing Algonquin in the district finals tomorrow night at 5:15 at Grafton High School. And luckily for us, we're gonna actually have a doubleheader at Grafton High School, because following the field hockey game, our girls soccer team will be playing the district semifinals versus Algonquin. It's the Neshoba-Algonquin night tomorrow at 7 o'clock. And the girls team defeated Grafton last night, one-zero in the quarterfinals to advance.
It was an awesome game.
Yeah, great game.
Cold.
Right when I walked out, I was closing my computer up, and that's when they scored. But I was trying to rush over, you have to, field hockey in Grafton. Yep, my luck. The football team, they played in their first playoff game last Friday night at home, and they defeated Westbrook twenty-seven thirteen, and then moving on to the district finals, which they'll play Marlboro this Saturday morning at 11 a.m. at Doyle Field. This is actually a rematch of last year's district final game, so hopefully we can hold on top, because last year, unfortunately, we did not. Our cross-country teams will compete in the district championship on Saturday at Gardner's Golf Course. And our cheer team, they competed in the league competition last Sunday. They placed second, which qualified them for the regional tournament, which will be this Sunday at Shepherd Hill, and we're just waiting on the time of that. So, you know, fall teams are doing very well. To have two teams playing for a district title this week is unbelievable, and hopefully if soccer can win tomorrow night, they'll move on to the district finals that'll be played on Saturday night. So, I think the fall weather is finally here. As I look for the forecast for the next few days, I think we're gonna be bundling up at these games, so high of thirty-nine tomorrow, so, I know.
Can I ask you a question at that point?
Yes.
A couple of school committee members have asked me where they can buy Neshoba gear, what time does the school store open, do they have access to it?
So, if you were to email Starros Andropoulos, who's in charge of the school store, he will have a student or himself who will open the school store at any time. Usually during lunchtimes, but he does open up after school, before school, to help out. You got it.
All right, good.
Any questions on any of the fall updates then? Nope, great. Keep going, Tanya.
All right, so then the next piece is, Superhand Clutchy asked Mr. Cullinan and I to look at user fee data across the Midwatch League, which we talked about last year a little bit as well. So, we did that this fall, we talked to the middle school principals, briefly discussed this with Superhand Clutchy and Pat Maroney, and we've come up with a user fee proposal that is just a suggestion to you as a school committee, that we want, I wanna discuss tonight, and then kinda go from there. You think this is a good idea? If you wanna go back and ask us, look at something else, just have a conversation on what we should do in our next step with user fees. So, when we look at the high school user fees, the average fee among our Midwatch schools is $210. So, after looking at that and looking at our schools compared to schools that are above the same size as us in our league, we're suggesting to increase our user fee by $25 to $175 for next year. We thought that'd be fair, and giving, you know, families enough notice about that would be, you know, good, so families can prepare for that. And we also wanna add a family cap, because a lot of schools do have a family cap, and we're suggesting a family cap of 900 per year, which is approximately five fees. You know, we went through and looked at all the different family caps and what the user fees of those schools were, and after doing some math and figuring out, the average of fees for a family cap was four. You know, right around that three to five range, so we thought, you know, with having a family cap for the first time, and we do have some families with twins and triplets that are playing sports, so we thought having a family cap would be very important for us. And then also looking at students with free and reduced lunch rates. Right now, we just waive a fee if a student is free or reduced lunch, but as we dug deeper, a lot of schools have a rate for reduced lunch students and then free lunch fees. So, we were gonna suggest that a student that has a reduced lunch fee is a $75 fee, and then if they, a student has free lunch, then that'd be, we'd waive the fee completely.
Oh, that makes me happy.
Yeah, and I think it's just working with all the different, you know, families and, you know, different situations we could come up with. And then one thing we thought of is just not having our high school fees and middle school fees combined, so you have one family cap for the high school, because we're gonna suggest that the fees for the middle schools right now stay status quo at fifty-five per sport, with no family cap.
So, the cap is only at the high school?
At the high school. Yep. And again, this is just our suggestions after talking with, you know-
Well, you're gonna get a recommendation. This is, it's okay, a lot of pride, we're hearing you.
We can go from there.
Okay.
Any questions on any of, yes?
So, why are you raising them? Are the, are the fees not covering the sports? Like, the, I mean, the fee is for the buses and for the stipend and for the reps, right?
Yeah.
So, are the fees not covering the sports?
No, they are, but I think it was, we felt that coming off of last year, it seemed like our fees were low compared to the other schools in our league, and that we wanted to look at a potential increase.
Again, I wanna point out that this is a, no, this is a recommendation. She's putting it out there and saying, this is something that we can sit, can consider. If you don't want to do this, that's absolutely fine. And so, she's just putting forward the thinking that they had, and taking a look at everybody. It's up to you to do whatever you want. If you want, if you like all of this, great. If you don't like all of it, that's fine too. If you like pieces of it, that's fine. She said at the very beginning, this is about starting a discussion tonight, and so that's how we're seeing it. We're coming to you with some discussion items. Kathy?
There is a budget line item having to do with athletics, isn't there? On the regular budget? I don't have my budget book coming. So, what does that cover? Does that, does this, when you mean, is that budget line item, or is that a separate budget on that?
That, probably, Pat, I bring that to you to provide detail on that.
It does cover some of the costs, as far as like, equipment.
Yeah.
We've allocated, we allocated some of the costs directly to the user fees, and made sure that all of the user fees were spent, and then after that, whatever, basically, what we could leave in the regular appropriation. So, just so you know, the costs go up every year, just like the teacher's contract goes up, that there's a stipend in that, in the contract for athletics, and some of them are based on, you know, I don't, I don't know-
The base salary.
Is it the base salary? Okay. And if those costs are going up, so must the user fees, over time. And the cost of reconditioning the equipment goes up all the time, so we have to keep up with the times.
So, what are we covering out of the budget for the athletic equipment, the reconditioning, the stipends, the, is this, are the user fees covering the cost to provide the athletics? And that, so that's one question, because-
Is it cost neutral? No. The regular appropriation is covering some of the athletic costs.
And what happens to what is, well, leftover, for lack of a better word? So, if you have one of the over after-
There isn't, there's nothing left.
No, what she's saying-
So, but then it, then it goes to the, the district budget. So, I guess like, the point that I, I guess I'm trying to make is that if the user fees go up, maybe the budget piece doesn't have to go up.
Exactly.
So, that would, in my mind-
And that's what we're trying to control.
Doing that, where, when was the last time we had an increase in user fees?
Honestly, I think when I was in high school, it was 150.
Yikes.
So, I, you said it was like last year. I don't know. You don't like this, I see you here, I saw you back. Yeah. Figure it out.
So, I guess that's a point.
There's been no, there's been, there's no, been, whatever you wanna call it, cost of living increase, there's been no adjustments with the scaling that's taken place with the costs. We've, like so many of the other programs, they sat stagnant, and they haven't kept up with the times, so now, it turns out that the, the budget ends up subsidizing much more than perhaps it was originally intended to do, and so-
And that's-
Right, so, we're still at 175, and I really appreciate all the work that went into that. 175, we're still well under the average, still, at this point in time. So, personally, I don't think that's unrealistic, but my question that I have is the family cap. Have we looked into how many families that affects the cap, and that we don't end up shooting ourselves in the foot by putting the cap in place and losing a ton of revenue? Do you know what I mean on that?
When we saw that the family cap for others were, you know, right at three or four, that's why we went with 900, which is five, which, so we don't, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot because of that.
Right.
And again, that is something brand-new to us, so that was like, a lot of looking at these and trying to talk things through about, you know, what would make sense. And maybe we try a few, maybe that doesn't make sense, but that's something that we don't know until we try it.
And we've had a lot of back-and-forth discussion on that family cap, too, so that you're aware of that. I mean, even when we got the sheet, Pat and I looked at it and said, is that where we landed? Because we've had so much discussion on this family cap, back and forth. You know, should we, because originally, we were gonna come forward with a 1200, and then we went back and forth on that. So, there's been a lot of discussion. We landed at the 900, but again, this is about discussion tonight.
Kathy?
So, we know that the user fee has stayed the same for about fifteen-
At least fifteen years, yep.
At least fifteen. What has, how has that line item grown over that period of time? I don't expect you to have that information off the top of your head, but I mean, that would be information that I would wanna look at and talk about before making a decision.
And I'd really like to see what it actually costs to, to maintain the equipment, and I mean, I don't mind raising it to 175, but when I first asked you, you said that it's more than enough, and I'd like you to raise it for a reason, and not to make revenue. So, if it's, if maintenance is involved, because we're not seeing the numbers, so if maintenance is involved, if upkeep, stipends, all that stuff is involved, I'd like to see that number.
Okay, so do, between Pat and Tanya, do you, do you understand what the school committee is asking for you to go back to take a look at?
Right, so is it the breakdown, sport by sport? Could I have that from last year? I can, I can, you know, update that again.
Right, so just providing justification-
Right.
On that end.
And also how the, the budget line has changed in the last-
That would be Pat's-
Since 2000.
Pat's got that one covered. I, you know what I'm gonna be, I mean, I agree with everything these folks are saying. This side of the table, do you have anything?
I have a view which is different, which is, our future as adults is basically going to be staring at computers and not moving around. And I think that schools are an opportunity for everybody to really know what it's like to move around, and I encourage everyone to contemplate no fees at all for athletics, to have a no gateway opportunity for everybody to be fully engaged. So, that's, that's where I stand on the topic of fees in general.
I don't necessarily, I mean, that's a little-
It's a long-term thing.
To the far side, but I'm not that, I, I don't disagree with you, and I think the encouragement piece is huge, but I don't know that we're gonna be able to tackle that one right now.
No, I mean, I, philosophically, I agree with you.
Right.
And, and that gets a little bit at, at my question, is I know that there are some schools that have a much higher family cap when looking at the top of this list, and that's why I think seeing the actual numbers will be helpful, because 900 to me seems really high. You know, if I was thinking about my own children who are way too little to be playing high school sports yet. And it looks like a lot of other ones are sort of, you know, they do this staggered, it's a couple, Clinton and, what's that else, like Murdoch, and a few others, where they sort of stagger it, it's this much for the first sport, this much for the second, this much for the third, or they're capping it at, you know, 500. So, I would also be interested in seeing the numbers and kinda getting a sense for, you know, are we, by capping it too high, are potentially discouraging families from, as Martin's saying, participating in sports, which are very important.
A lot of that has to do with the expense of the programs themselves.
Yeah.
And then, then part of that is, you know, with all due respect, are we efficient in what we're doing with the programs and the costs and the expense of it? So, I think that's fair, I think the cap is critical, though.
Yeah.
Because I've got a parent who's reached out every year, and she's got kids, like, I think she's got either twins or triplets.
Triplets. She has four, four children playing right now.
Right, so like, you know, I mean, you could say, well, that's an extreme situation, but not necessarily, there's children that are in the district, right?
No, the cap is really important.
Yeah. My concern is equity. I have a big problem with the equity in the sports, and we've talked about this before, and this year, I'm not gonna be able to get beyond it. So, when there's a sport that costs more money, it should not be borne from the district, I don't think. That's my opinion, and so, this, this, you know, I mean, you've got a sport that, you know, $20,000 comes out of the budget every year for that sport. Now, the other question I have is, I don't even know what the football expense is, like, I've never seen what that is, and I'm sure it's higher too, and I'm not picking on any sport, it's just the visibility into what the actual costs are, but I can't, I can't, I have a hard time getting behind one sport that is extraordinarily subsidized through the budget. I just don't think that's fair. And, and, and if that can't be covered by the user fees, then maybe we just don't have it. So, Neil?
So, I philosophically-
Agree with you, but I'm gonna disagree with you.
However, we're going down the wormhole in that respect, because if you wanna compare football, for instance, you gotta get the reconditioning equipment, but that is a major revenue generator, whereas you've got golf, really, I don't know who pays to go and watch spectator sport golf, right? I mean, at that point.
Right.
So, that has a drag, and I think so, if, if that's the approach you're going to use, I think there also needs to be, we don't like the word in this district, but an offset that's put in place for the particular sport based on revenue that's generated for it too. I think if we're talking about equity interference-
That, that I'm good with, I'm okay with that, you know, come up with the solution, come up with the recommendation. And, and the football, my comment about football was, I just don't know what the cost of, like, I understand what the cost of the other sports are, I don't know what the cost of football is, so I don't know, and I have a kid that plays, so I'm not picking on any one sport. My concern is with some, you know, we've got a family cap excludes swimming, hockey, and skiing, because swimming, hockey, and skiing have additional fees, and parents pay the full boat on swimming, and I'm assuming parents pay the full boat on skiing, but parents do not pay the full boat on hockey.
So I think, so for skiing, the parents are paying for the ski pass. The school's still covering the buses, the race lanes, and the actual practice lanes for, at the mount. So the parents are paying for their season pass so their child can, you know, go every day with the team, and then they can go on, you know, weekends and.
So what's the, so this is good.
Yep.
So what's left over that's impacting the budget?
We pay for skiing?
Yeah.
So the practice lanes?
No, I mean the dollar amount.
It don't have a top of my.
So, yeah, so this, so, so you don't, you know, I don't want you to feel you have to justify something.
Yep.
I'm just raising the equity question because we know that ice time is extraordinarily expensive. And, you know, I have kids that swim, and I know pool time is very expensive, and so from the time my kids were in second and third grade, I had to pay for pool time, that's just how it is. So I get to high school, I shouldn't assume that I'm not going to have to continue to pay additional for an expensive sport. I don't think it's fair to the rest of the kids who do sports, the budget, the whatever, that we would take more money out to offset the cost of the swim lanes than the swim time or the pool time. I feel the same way, and I feel very strongly about it with hockey, and I'm not trying to, you know, incite issues here, but it's, what is it, 20 something thousand dollars a year? And it's how big is, how many Neshoba students? Just Neshoba, not the other kids that make up the team? How many Neshoba students in hockey?
38 last year.
Okay, for 38 kids, the budget's subsidizing $20,000.
But it wasn't. So the budget looks different this year. So for swimming and hockey, parents cover the cost of practice, practice ice and practice swim lanes. The district is covering the cost of officials, the transportation, and game ice and swim meets. So we could, the district covers the cost of those. So the parents are only doing pool time for practices and ice time for practices.
It's postseason play that gets expensive beyond that, right?
And that's one of those, as we said, we, we don't know if that, you know, we win two hockey championships, you know, three years ago, and then last year we don't make the playoffs. So you can't really tell when you're going to make postseason.
Right.
I just think there needs to be equity.
But the other thing too, golf teams, do, do the, the kids, do they have to buy their own golf clubs?
Yes.
Or do we provide clubs?
Well, yeah.
So that's a set that they have to pay, but, so what I'm saying is there are, there are hidden fees that, it's not just, we have hockey, swim, and ski teams that are listed there, but you need your golf clubs.
Yep.
That's not cheap. You know, ski teams, in, in addition to that, you need your skis.
Right, you need to have your.
Cross-country needs to rent or purchase skis.
My hockey too.
That last year, that's not cheap, you know, and then they pay for, they also pay additional practice for going over to Weston or something like that for cross-country. There's some, there's some.
They pay for their season pass.
Yeah, there's, there's a season pass, so a lot of these are, are actually, it's not just three, is where I'm going with, with the extra fees.
Right, every sport you play, there's something that the family has to incur.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right, so I'm saying there, there may be more equity than perhaps is initially realized in that.
I think so.
Well, swimming, I'm not picking on swimming, but you got a bathing suit.
Okay, well, we can, I'll educate you later about that sport, that it's more than just swimming in your underwear, but we'll get there. All right, so what do you want to do? Because it's not.
And I'm just going to toss this out there, because I'm not sure, a term of remorse, if this is where you're heading, like, are you thinking of different fees for different sports? Is that what, the line you're thinking here?
I don't know if that's the answer, I just don't know that there's, there's equity in this, I just don't know, and I'm not picking on it. Because you know what? Hallelujah, we have a cap recommendation. Hallelujah, you're looking at the numbers and trying to figure out, are we subsidizing this? Should we be subsidizing this? To what extent, if yes?
So we're even having this type of conversation.
It's huge.
Yeah.
It's huge, so don't, don't take my questions negatively, that's not the intent.
But I want to make sure that they're going back to find exactly what you want them to find, whatever that is from this committee.
Well, I need to know what, where you guys want to go next. Here comes Mark, find out a way to pay for it all. I'd be there, I'd be there, I don't think it's going to work, but.
I, I understand it's not, it's quite a philosophical difference. I think we have never really had this conversation, we don't have a culture of having this, so I think just even getting information is a start. I think that's a very good start, without necessarily being driven into a decision.
Oh, no, we're not making a decision tonight.
No, no, we should be very happy just to go to the next phase of having some information and seeing if that gets people a grip on how to think about the whole.
I think what would be helpful from, from, is to talk to community members and see what their thoughts are on this too. I mean, we, we need the data.
Yep.
Right, we will, but, but the data's just one piece of it, right? We need to talk to, I can, I know a couple of parents I'm going to call who ask about this all the time, and just pulse the people in your area, and if you don't know, parents of kids in the schools, call us and we'll, we'll give you a couple of names, Kathy and then Steve.
I, I know that last year, Tanya put together the cost of each sport.
Yeah, oh, that was good.
So, but I, I'd like to, not right now, but pursue this idea of looking at the actual cost of the sport is, and maybe looking at how that impacts the, the user fee, to at least have that discussion. But I also am very interested in that budget line item about athletics, and how it has changed over the years, and, and what has come out of that account to pay for what? Because, you know, we want it to be fair, we want it to be accessible, but especially at the high school level.
Right.
These are tryouts, there are kids that make it and, and kids who do not, and, you know, I don't know that we've ever had a discussion about intramurals, or things that are no cut, just to get a sense of participation and looking at what the demographics of the participation are. But I think there's going to be a larger discussion, and maybe we parse it out how it's going to look, but I think that to, to go back to the information, maybe it's updated that Tanya presented last year about what each sport actually costs, what the breakdown is, and then what we've been spending out of that athletic account.
Well, and for intramurals, is that included the?
That's part of the regular appropriation, intramurals.
So kids who do intramurals, do they pay the, to do intramurals? No.
Is there an intramural system?
Subsolutions, they do.
Yes.
Because it's all in the two seasons.
Why, so why, so why wouldn't they pay a small, a fee for intramurals? I don't.
We never have. We run, at each of the middle schools and the high school, we run eight intramural programs a year.
And then the curricular after school.
Yep.
But then there's a stipend that's, that's accompanied that?
And that's, the stipend's coming from the district budget. Yep.
That's something else to look at. And, and also to look at, when we have a list of the other schools, what do they charge, if anything, for the intramural, their intramural programs?
They don't charge for intramurals the most.
No, our school does.
Oh, for the other high schools?
Yeah.
I'm not sure about other high schools.
Well, see, I mean, that would be helpful to look at, what they charge.
All right, well, Steve?
Okay. I think as a, as a base, to at least look at the cost side of it rather than the philosophical side of it, we need to see a, how much does each sport cost per participant? And then we can balance that against what each participant is paying as the fee, you know, so it's what, it's basically a, a, what does each sport cost per participant less what the user fee is taking out of that? Let's say it costs $1,000 for a football player, less $150. So the net cost to the system per participant is $850. I'm just throwing the.
So, so.
But I think that's a place to stop, and that puts everything on an apples-to-apples basis.
Okay, so, so I think you, Neil?
Tanya's done a lot of that work.
Right.
And so I get what you're saying, Steve, so if, and you may have even done it, did you put how many people are involved in each particular program?
Yeah, I printed out my notes from last year.
We can figure that out, which is great.
Yeah.
And the only thing that I think, like, well, one of the things is if you could have like a little notations, add another column to that, and put in notations in there of what the all-in is, in other words, so golf, like, okay, you get your fees, but, you know, student pays for the clubs, you know, and just like little notations for that, and I think that starts helping people understand what the, the all-in, because there's an all-in cost, and then there's what the fees are and the, and those all-in costs are going to vary.
Okay, so.
And it just helps us, I think, get a firm grip.
Thanks, I'm sorry, we really need to move on, but Susan?
I just have a really quick question.
No, I want you to speak, yeah, please.
Are there any, do you know of any districts that specify what types of expenses they agree to pay using the user fee? Like, in other words, could we specify, we're only going to pay for busing, officials, uniforms, equipment, like, and then just sort of like come up with one cost pool? Am I making sense? And then, so we take in the money, we agree, these are the expenses, whether we take in enough to make it revenue neutral or not, and then the parents know when they sign up for the sport that any additional cost that's, that's incurred by the district, they're responsible for.
That's putting a cost on condition of, for each individual program.
Yeah, above and beyond officials and transportation and. Do you know of any districts that do that?
I don't know.
Is it really quick? Because I want to wrap this up.
But what would that would do about, like, you spoke about, what would that do about all the money that they bring in? So that would have to be included also.
Yeah.
That'd be an offset.
Right, yeah. Okay, so we're asking for a lot here, and we've got people that do, that have day jobs, so let's define priorities on what we would, what did we hear around the table? You took better notes than I did, and then prioritize.
So can I just, can I take the lead on this?
Yeah, yeah.
So first of all, the intramurals, I personally don't know of any school districts that charge anything for intramurals, but we can send it out on listserv, and we'll just take a look and see.
And I have a big meeting tomorrow morning that I can ask them.
Yeah, and, and to be honest with you, the intramurals, that's really one of the few places where, you know, I have to say, like, this goes back to Mark's thinking that it's a place that kids can play sports that they don't have to pay, so I don't know that I personally philosophically would be in agreement with charging, but we'll take a look. So you can just shoot a question out on your listserv. Second thing is the, the cost per sports that you, the work that you did last year, just, just update that quickly for us. I don't think that should be a whole lot of work for you, because I know that your template is already there, so it's just kind of a case of updating that. Pat, you're also going to take a look at the line item as per Kathy's questions, so I think that those for me were the big takeaways from tonight. I also want to jump on with what Mark said, I really appreciate the rich discussion around the table tonight, I think it was very, very helpful, and, and I really appreciate the engagement, the level of engagement on this discussion, so thanks to all of our school committee members, thank you for all your work, Tanya.
Tanya, I can't thank you enough for this work. I mean, it's visibility in an area we knew nothing about, so thank you so much, and just know that it's truly appreciated.
Thank you.
So we're going to put, we're going to put you folks, we're not going to take a vote, we're going to put you back on another, an upcoming agenda.
Yeah.
And Neil, Lynn, last comments before we move on.
You got me, I was asking when she was coming back, did you know?
Yep, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to bring her back.
When she's ready, once she's.
Don't let me forget.
And it's, it has to, how long before we have to replace the turf?
So it's anywhere from 10 to 15 years, so we're near five.
Okay.
What is that, what was the question?
That's important to know. When do we have to replace the turf field? We've got five to 10 years from now, so.
And actually, Rob and I, before I knew Rob was the interim, we've actually been working on coming up with a one, five, and 10-year plan, that includes the turf, the track, and the tennis courts, those are the things you have to maintain to get your full life out of them, so we're in the process of trying to.
They're outside, don't get it right now.
Yeah, we're trying to come up with that plan, so we know, and we're working, then trying to get quotes and whatnot, so we have an idea what that's going to look like.
Okay, all right.
For the budget cycle.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. All right, ladies, I am so sorry, we are so behind, and please come join us and give us an update on MCAS, because we really do need to hear what you have to say.
Hey, well, good evening.
Good.
Thank you for the invitation, it's great to be here.
It's funny, you're twenty years later.
No, I think we have a, we just want to remind everybody, for anybody who is watching tonight, so this is Patty O'Connor, who is our director of our ELA and the humanities component of our, our world, and Martina Kenyon, who is the director of our STEM side of our academic world. So they've pulled together a number of different iterations, and you're going to quickly go through those, the final iteration tonight, and I have one or two things, what you've done, that I want to read off of the, the MESC bulletin, that, that some of our school committee members may have taken a look at or not, but I think these are important to bring forward tonight. So Martina, Patty, we turn it to you, thanks.
Great. Okay, so while we were looking at the data, we generated some guiding questions to help us sort through and look at the information. The guiding questions that we created are basically around the district, oh, do you want to move the screen?
It's right there.
I'll let you. Okay.
For the button for the side, yep, that one.
Right? Okay, so, so the guiding questions are, are helping us focus our, our work and the way we're looking at the data. This year, we had a brand-new assessment in grades three through eight, it's called the Next Generation Assessment, and because it's a brand-new assessment, we're not able to compare the data from the previous year. So as a result, the bulk of our information is looking at our district in relation to the, the state's performance. So we chose this particular slide because you may remember, last year, we were considered a Level Two district, and this year, the accountability formula has changed, so we're no longer, we, we didn't receive a level, because the criteria to determine a level for this year is based on participation because of the new assessment, so everything has changed this year. So I'm just pointing out that as a district, we're not assigned a level this year.
Is that unique to us, or is that every district in the state?
No, I actually just wanted to add on, so no, there was no assignment of Level One this year, and there was no assignment of Level Two for districts on whole, so districts either received no level if they met the criteria for participation, or if they didn't, they received a Level Three status, and in some cases, Four or Five, depending on other.
So that we don't have a level is not a bad thing?
Actually, no.
It's a good thing, okay.
So is that what you're continuing? We're going to have to do levels next year.
We are not 100% sure, we haven't, we haven't heard with certainty.
I don't know.
But we know that this is a baseline year.
And it's only based on participation, is it?
Only this year, because it's a baseline year for our new assessment.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So if you printed any kind of the presentation before today, this slide wasn't in there, because as we were kind of going through what we wanted to say, we felt like we needed to add a little more context, so if anybody wants a hard copy, I do have some to pass around. So just before we actually go into our data at Neshoba, we wanted to give you a little background and a few reminders as far as some of the changes that took place on the Next Generation MCAS assessment that students in grades three through eight took in 2017. So the first big change was that the types of questions that students worked through for both ELA and math were very different, there were new types of questions, new styles, and they were more rigorous, more higher-order thinking oriented. On top of that, in grades fourth and eight, students took this Next Generation MCAS assessment on the computer in 2017. Again, because this is a new assessment and a baseline year, we're now actually seeing the achievement categories reported as listed there, exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. Those categories actually take the place of advanced, proficient, needs improvement and warning, which have been our legacy indicators in the past. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about this over the next two slides, but there's a reason that they're actually not comparable, we cannot compare the legacy levels to the new ones, and I'll talk a little bit more about that.
Very different.
They're very different.
Can I just go back to, I'm just, and I'm not going to do a lot of interruptions here, but just for example, I think sometimes when we think about kids using computers, we think, oh, well, they're used to using them more frequently in the classroom or at home or whatever, but I'm thinking the ELA, for example, the ELA, there's, there are ways that those kids have to go in and cut and paste and, and highlight things and everything, and keep in mind again that our district did not pilot this stuff, and so this was really brand-new to our kids this year, and especially with the ELA more than the math, math is a little bit more straightforward. The ELA, just navigating that system is a craft in and of itself.
That's another layer. So again, the next two slides really just talk a little bit more about why the levels So, again, the next two slides really just talk a little bit more about why the levels aren't comparable, because we felt that that was important context as to why we're not talking about comparing to previous years and why we're really focused on our comparison to the state. Another change in order, if you printed before today, this is actually the next slide. So, if everybody, anyone has this in front of them. So, as Patty mentioned, we're in a, we're in a baseline year with a new assessment. And so, as part of that process, teams, teams of teachers gathered together to actually determine what the expectations were for students in each of the achievement categories. And one of the outcomes of that conversation was that the expectation on the 2017 MCAS was that students would, about fifty percent of the students would fall into the exceeding or meeting categories, which are the green and yellow on the screen there. And conversely, on the other side of that, fifty percent of students statewide for the 2017 MCAS would fall into the partially meeting and not meeting categories.
That's the state's expectation?
Yes, and actually, I looked at the real data, the actual, like, after-the-fact data, and it's very close to that.
Fifty up, fifty down, ten percent on each level.
And so, part of the reason for that was that the, um, the question type, the questions are a lot more rigorous, and so, they were kind of accounting for the fact that we have some work to do as a state to really meet those expectations. So, I'm not saying here that that's gonna continue, but that was the conversation.
So, this is a perfect segue for me to just read this one piece. So, again, this is the MASC bulletin that you probably all got. I just want to read this one little piece. It says, "The new MCAS is a more difficult test, and it is expected that the test results will reflect that. The state projects that student results will be more in line with the most recent results of the National Assessment for Educational Progress," which is the name. "There will be fewer students achieving in higher categories, not because student learning has been lost, but because the state is applying a higher standard."
And another interesting outcome of that is that the teams worked vertically across grade levels to ensure that there was consistency in terms of the expectations at each of the grade levels in comparison. And this is a huge reason why we can't compare to the previous achievement levels in past years. This, this very busy graphic shows the expectation breakdown for each of the grade levels in each of the content areas. And as you might be able to see, in some grade levels, fifty percent of students could have been in advanced and proficient, and in some grade levels, eighty or above percent of students could have been in the advanced proficient category. And so, that's, um, that's a part of the reason why we can't really compare. It's truly apples to oranges or, or beyond.
Or as a reporter said to me, apples to broccoli this year. It's apples to broccoli, yeah.
So, this has been, uh, an opportunity for us to look at our data a little bit differently. We did not compare, um, because we couldn't, to previous years for grades three through eight. And so, we've really focused our, our analysis on looking at how we did in comparison to the state and to students statewide and to peer groups statewide.
Peer groups, for growth.
Okay, so now, we're going to look specifically at Neshoba's data. And the next slide is the grades three through eight, English Language Arts. And as you can see, on the right-hand side is the state graph, which, um, in the, in an earlier slide, Martina explained about the expectations that fifty percent would be in the upper categories. And, and this, um, is a great representation of it. However, um, our, our district is doing very well. And you can see that we are well above the state in terms of performance in grades three through eight.
But this is a baseline, right?
Yes.
So, if we're performing higher, is it gonna be harder for us to prove achievement?
Growth?
Growth?
It's a great question.
And we are almost there in terms, Martina's going to be focusing on growth.
We'll look at that in a minute.
But I, I mean, just to acknowledge your question, when we first saw our scores, we had mixed feelings.
Mixed feelings, that's a good reason.
Because our, and, um, we'll talk about it over and over. Our, our students and educators have worked, as they always do, so hard to just help our students really achieve at their potential or even beyond that. And so, that's shown in the data here, but certainly, there was the other side to that, which is, we don't know.
That's a baseline.
We don't know, yeah. And we don't know because all of it is changing. We don't know even what baseline means, because it's, it may be very different from previous years. So, for now, we're not trying to speculate, because we simply don't know what that's gonna look like. Not even just from a performance standpoint. So, this, as a reminder, is ELA, and it looks like the exact same graphic from our...
Right, very similar with, with math as well.
Uh, and, uh, the story is also the same for science, technology, and engineering. You'll notice, however, that those, uh, those graphics are actually reported using the old achievement levels, the legacy achievement levels. The reason for that is that the transition timeline for STE is a little bit lagging to math and ELA. So, the students will take the Next Generation STE assessments for grades three through eight in, in 2019, and then that will be followed by the high school either one or two years after that.
So, this isn't a baseline?
So, this is still a baseline in terms of the leveling of school districts, but it's not a baseline. If we had annual data, we could look back. And I, I actually have, and it's, it, it looks comparable to previous years, so... So, another way that we can look at our data, just in terms of, again, how are we doing as a district, is to really talk about the two major components of performance on the MCAS. So, we've talked so far a lot about the achievement performance, which in this graphic is the, um, vertical axis there. How many students in our district are meeting or exceeding expectations. However, the other very important side to that is our, how are our students growing in comparison to their own performance in previous years? And so, um, hopefully, you, you can begin to imagine that the ideal case is to be in the top-right section of this graphic for high growth, high achievement. And so, um, the next couple of graphics kind of show you where we stand from that perspective as well. So, this data is the ELA, that, uh, growth data.
So, if you can imagine, like, somebody said, well, what's the X in the middle? If you can imagine that this, you should really be almost drawing a line right here. And, and I'd like to point out how many districts are here, and even down here. So, to be here is, like, incredibly good, because a lot of districts are down here. And by the way, you can go online, if you go onto the Mass DESE website, you can bring up all these data graphs.
These are all public.
They're all there.
So, that's the ELA achievement versus growth graphic for grades three through eight. This is, this is the math achievement versus growth graphic for grades three through eight. This is the ELA achievement versus growth graphic for grade ten.
Why is the X on?
So, that's an indication of the average state, um, achievement versus growth. Or average achievement versus median growth. And the math achievement versus growth. So, you know, our summary of our overall data is that we've had another very strong MCAS performance year for our aggregate of students overall. And again, we really feel that that's a testament to many different factors, most acknowledging the work that our students and educators have done to, to just continue to push this forward amongst many other contributors.
Okay, uh, with this slide, we're looking at subgroup data. In particular, we're looking at the high-needs subgroup. And the high-needs subgroup is made up of, uh, many subgroups, including our English learners, students with disabilities, and our low-income students. And so, um, they become clustered, and then they're the high-needs group. So, as you can see, we are above the state with our high-needs group. However, we're not significantly high. It's, it's not the kind of good news story that we have with the aggregate. So, the subgroup work continues to be an area of focus for us, an area that is a priority, and we continue to look at our programs that are servicing our, our kids. These are the dates for next spring. And, um, in particular, what I want to point out is, uh, this past spring, we had computer-based testing in two grades, and now, we're adding two more grades. So, this spring, um, our fourth, fifth, and seventh-grade students will all experience the computer-based testing. And then, the following year, um, it will be three through ten.
So, as already mentioned, we're very proud of our MCAS data, um, once again this year, and we're looking forward to building upon that progress in, um, the coming years. So, as far as next steps, uh, the first thing we do with this data is really meet with the principals individually to look at the data in context, in the context of their school, in, in the context of the students, and, and the various contexts that exist. We also, last week, met with the principals as a group, um, which was actually the first time that we've done that. And the purpose for that was really to talk about how we can build off of one another's strengths, because we have so many. And in some of our analysis, identified that there were different areas of strength. So, how can we kind of learn from each other in terms of that? And I, um, the feedback that we heard from that conversation from principals was that that was, felt very productive for them as well. On the same line of thinking, um, we are looking at, uh, patterns with instructional practices within our district in terms of helping more students grow academically. And then, also anticipate looking outside of our district, just where, where perhaps we, um, have contacts that can help us there. And as one example, we're seeing some early indications that, uh, the very, very strong efforts in, um, terms of co-teaching in, in middle school, in Luther-Berwick Middle School, in, in the math classrooms. We were actually kind of surprised to see that shown already in this first year of data, because we just started that. So, we don't know, we can't say that that's a trend, but certainly, it was, um, very reassuring, yes.
Okay, and then, um, last spring, uh, we met with groups of elementary staff and middle school staff, and we looked at how we, um, service our at-risk or students that need enrichment. And that process is called the staff process or the student assistance team. So, that, uh, form has been fully updated, and this was one of the district goals that we had, um, identified for our, for our DIP. And so, uh, now, we're using the same form district-wide, K through eight. So, uh, that's, that's a success that we're hoping will help us identify students in a more consistent way. And then, finally, we're continuing to work with students and teachers to help get them up to speed with the computer-based testing. So, those are some of the next steps that we're taking away from the...
So, I remember last year, Superintendent Clenchey was new, and she said, "You haven't done anything on computer-based testing, and I'm just gonna let you know that I want you to be prepared that because you haven't done it, it's gonna affect your scores." And then, the result, I don't know what you people did, but that's pretty impressive.
It's amazing. I, I'm gonna also agree with both Martina and Patty. I, I think that our teachers and our kids deserve so much credit, you know, use the term educator, because it was, you know, those people that were leadership, you know, department chairs, you name it. Anybody who was involved in getting us to here is amazing. And, and I think, you know, I said this, I think to, you know, to Neil this morning, we were talking, just briefly about it. And I, I do think that what we did, we need to replicate again this year for the work in terms of getting those kids and those staff ready for the CBA. That's huge. It is not all about a test, so, please be clear. I, I totally get that, but nor do I ever want our kids to be disadvantaged. And I think that the work that was done last year is amazing. I mean, we had a great meeting again today with the principals, and Succi and Cindy were involved in that, making sure that all our ducks are aligned for this upcoming. So, I think we're in a good place, really good place moving forward.
All right, we're gonna take a couple of quick comments, questions from you folks, and then, if there's more, we'll funnel them through.
Can funnel them through you, and then, we can put it out there.
All right, guys, Neil.
I wrap my mind around high achievement, high growth. I get the high achievement, but how do we have high growth if we won't get one round of testing?
Question. So, it comes back to how the growth is actually calculated. So, I have a handout that attempts to illustrate that. This is from the DESE. I'll keep one, and I may not have enough copies for everyone, so, sorry. So, the way student growth is calculated is that students are compared by their achievement, their assessment achievement history. So, they're grouped together according to their history with a group of academic peers.
Like peers.
And then, all the assessment data for the current year for all those students is, um, sort of organized and assigned percentiles, and that's how the growth is implied. So, it's progress, but really, looking forward.
The only other real quick thing was, we're going with third graders this year?
We're, no, fourth, fourth, um...
The addition is five and seven this year.
Okay, so, third, is third next year?
The following year, FY nineteen.
What sort of concerns do you have about the third graders having proper keyboarding skills?
We had this discussion this morning, actually, in the principals' meeting, because we, we explained the same thing. So, we actually are looking at a plan to get the, the, some of the, um, Chromebooks in the hands for our second graders, actually. And that very discussion happened this morning. So, it's a great question. I wouldn't say that we have a finalized plan, but we're certainly thinking about it.
Cool, thank you.
Susan?
I, I know that we can get this data off of DUCY's website, but I wondered if you could just speak to whether or not there was a difference between the grade levels that took a paper pencil test and the grade levels that took the computer base? Did you notice?
Yeah, we, we actually looked for that, and there was nothing that we could see, in particular for our district, that, so, that indicated a difference. So, there may have been one in the raw scores, but the scales, scaled scores accounted for it, and thus, it would have been the same for everybody in the state. So, there was no, nothing that we could see that spoke to any specific issue in our district.
So, the computer base was sort of a non-issue, it was just...
And, and I think it speaks to the preparation.
Yeah, yeah.
And there was a lot of effort went into that, so...
Okay, anything else, last minute?
Quick. So, would parents actually see something like this?
So, they don't get it in their mailing, but all the things that we have printed are, are from, on the DUCY website. There's actually, um, the presentation contains a link to parent resources, and a, a lot of the slides that we have from the DESE come from that parent resources page. So, it's part of a larger presentation that families have access to if they want.
No, I'm just wondering, if when I get my MCAS for my child...
That's not gonna be in...
That's not gonna be there, no.
Well, 'cause there's only one year. But will I get one next year? Show me growth?
You will, you will, well, students are assigned a median student growth percentile even this year. They, they do have that reported. They just don't get this explanation of how that comes to play in a year where the levels are not comparable.
Okay.
Ladies, thank you so much. I really appreciate your detailed work and that.
Thank you.
All right, um, in old business, um, we're gonna, it's okay with everyone? We're gonna bump the bylaws discussion to the next meeting? I think there's a little bit more we need to do with that. School Committee Manual, Kathy.
Okay, so, the Personnel Subcommittee has been working on the School Committee Manual since the spring, and this was sent out to, was the fourth draft. And folks were asked to provide input for us, um, in the spring. And what the Personnel Subcommittee did was, uh, look at the input, think about and discuss what really the purpose of the manual is. And there is so much, as we all know, having been on the school committee, that we need to know and understand. But this is really, the intention of the manual is a primer for those people who are currently on the committee. But if someone is interested in being on the committee, like, I just, wow, just thought it'd be cool to be on the school committee, not knowing all the stuff I have to know, but this would be helpful. And so, we, our, our goal was to sort of put as much information as possible in one place. And then, the other thing was not to go into extensive detail about certain things, but provide links to the additional information. So, on, um, page five, where it talks about the new school committee member orientation, there is a link of, of pertinent materials, um, that people would, would benefit by. There are, there are references to other things that are on the website. So, instead of including all of these things, there are references, and in some cases, links, um, to them. A lot of information is provided to us as we go about the work that we do that comes through the various committees, like policy. At the end of the policy, um, revision process, we will actually be connected, have our policies up on the MASC website along with those of the other school districts that subscribe. So, that'll make accessing that information a lot easier for us. And then, at the very end, in the appendix, there are some things that we felt would be useful. The, our protocols are an important piece of this. There are some things, we looked at, um, school committee manuals from several other districts. And then, um, those of you who are here, I can't remember, just last year or the previous year, we had Dorothy Presser and Glenn Kutter come and talk to us about emerging issues that involve school committees. So, things such as behavior, as, uh, public meeting, in public meetings, communication. There's a section on social media that we took from this work that Dorothy and Glenn had done through MASC. Information about the subcommittees. Again, when I joined the school committee and asked about subcommittees, there was no... information, what they do, what are your responsibilities. So, this is what we have put together. We deliberately kept it concise, I think, in the ones that we looked at. The shortest one was 13 pages, and there was one that was about 40 pages that we thought was way too long. At the end, we have our organizational chart, and in the appendix, bylaws, the meeting calendar, the school calendar. And so, after six months of development, this is...
And many, many reviews.
Many reviews and edits, this is what we are bringing forward to the committee.
Okay. So, the document, again, just to reiterate what Kathy said, is it's a primer, it's not intended to replace any of the MASC modules, it's not intended to replace the introductory program that we all have to take, and it's not intended to replace actual participation on the school committee. So, with that, assuming everyone's had a chance to weigh in, do you wanna, does anyone wanna make a motion to accept the document? Are there concerns that you may have? Because after the fourth reading, I would hope that that have been resolved.
Fourth draft, this is really...
Fourth draft?
Yes. So, this is really the first time they've seen it.
I thought, you know, you had sent it out before.
Oh, that's right, I did.
Yes.
In the spring.
You've sent it out.
I can go.
Did everyone read it?
Okay.
Okay. Any issues? Someone wanna make a motion? Would someone like to move to adopt the school committee, the Neshoba Regional School Committee Manual for use by school committee members?
So moved.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments? All those in favor, let's get it done. Thank you. It's unanimous, it passes.
That's wonderful.
Kathy, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
That was a big effort.
The other point I wanna make is, one of our, PSC's annual goals would be to revise it. So, this is our first year with it, and we'll take input, anything that we wanna add, any links. So, we'll be coming back every year for this. So, I could put that it was adopted on 11 pages.
This is a set of policies.
All right. So, we're gonna move on to the MOU. And Dawn Lo, Town Administrator from Bolton is here. Are you okay with coming to the table? I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Clenchey, he's like, "What am I doing?"
Okay, so, I'm gonna kinda tee it up, and then Dawn, maybe if you can, if you'd like to extrapolate a little bit of that. So, you'll recall that you basically approved an MOU to go forward to the Town Board of Selectmen. The Town Board of Selectmen had a look at it, kind of did some additional suggestions and whatnot. The chief and I have gone back and forth on a number of different things, and I'm gonna let you speak to maybe why the changes were there or whatever. We finally landed with the document that you've got in front of you, and really, where the final changes are, I'll just review that in a minute. But maybe, Dawn, is there anything that you'd like to bring to the table on the changes? Or, because it's a little bit different than the MOU that they first saw.
There was some discussion amongst the Board of Selectmen about, perhaps there were one or two aspects that either could have been expanded on a little bit, or an area that was unclear, I shouldn't say unclear, you know, but whether or not it was specifically a certain procedure. So, I think that's what they were thinking, and they asked the chief to come back and meet with you again to get your thoughts on it, and to see if you were okay with it.
And then we went through a process, there were some of the suggestions actually were kind of pulled out and put into guidelines that were generated as well, that the chief now has, from the first red line piece. So, finally, where we landed is, if you just take a look on, it's under Section Five, where it says procedure guidelines. If I can just draw your attention, and we're actually gonna suggest a change or two tonight as well, just minor, minor change to it. It says necessary follow-up, and you can see the yellow, is it highlighted there for you with the yellow gray? When the chief and I took a look at this, my feeling was, we already do this anyway. So, for me, it wasn't a big ask or a big add. It really wasn't an add at all, it was just articulating what we're already doing. And so, what it says, and then I'm gonna tell you what we'd like to kind of shift it to, "A teacher or other school employee with knowledge of facts pertinent to the reportable act shall first prepare and submit a report on the incident to the appropriate designated school liaison, to notify the designated school liaison of the existence of any physical evidence," and then over the page, "take reasonable steps to maintain any pertinent physical evidence in a secure place." And so, the chief and I both feel very comfortable with this. The only thing, the suggestion, Dawn, that I put forward is, rather than a teacher or other school employee, all we need to add there is something like any staff member. So, it's...
I'm not looking at what you're looking at. What are...
It's like page five.
Section Five.
Yep. On page five. There?
Yep. Necessary follow-up.
Five, three.
Oh, the stuff they reviewed.
Yes. Oh, yeah. So, rather than having a teacher or other school employees, any staff. And then designated school liaison, we don't really have designated school liaison, it's just administration. So, those would be the only changes that we would suggest. So, some thoughts on this, questions of Dawn or myself?
I'm a little concerned. This necessary follow-up is actually making somebody responsible for, and it almost sounds like the person making the report is now is to prepare and submit a report, notify the liaison, and then take a reasonable step to maintain any pertinent physical evidence in a secure place. So, if I see something, I'm not really sure of what I would see, but, and now I've gotta make sure these things happen?
I don't see it through that same lens. I'm gonna go back to the reporting period. I think that there was a sense that perhaps we weren't reporting, but we do. And so, if I can just go after that first piece, so to prepare and submit a report on the incident, that's just always happened as it is, so I have no problems with the first one. The second one, notify the designated school liaison of any existence of any physical evidence, that's if there's something there, just let the administrator know that you know that it's there. I'm just snapshotting this. And the last thing is just basically, rather than having civilians clean it up, we want to say we need to protect it until the police are done with whatever their investigation is.
Let's start from my lens here. All right, so, I've seen something, and so, the first thing I gotta do is write a report and notify somebody.
First, it's if you've seen one of these key items that are reportable.
Fine, I've seen a key item. So, I gotta prepare and submit a report to somebody, and I'm taking responsibility for this thing by preparing and submitting a report. And I'm gonna give it to the appropriate designated liaison, but I'm also gonna notify somebody of the existence of this evidence, and now I'm taking responsibility to do these reasonable steps. I don't wanna do that.
Yeah, I just don't see it through that same lens. I hear what you're saying, Lynn. That's not all how I see it, but I'm not disagreeing with the lens that you're looking through on this.
Don't get frustrated, but, "A teacher or other school employee with knowledge of the facts will be," that's why Lynn is saying that. She's reading it literally, which is what's scary, because frankly, I think this is, okay, I'm just gonna put it out there, this is over-engineering a document that is pretty much widely used for the districts that have SROs in the state of Massachusetts. So, here we have a situation where, because there's a little over-engineering, now we're gonna start to get into these discussions about what exactly does that mean? And I think, to Lynn's point, is what would make you feel more comfortable that the district will ensure that these things happen?
Rather than the specific individual...
Exactly.
So, is my responsibility to tell you about it, but then I'm hands-off?
Yeah. Not like, you know, teachers secure a scene or something.
Exactly, exactly. But again...
I have other things to do, that's not my job. My job is to teach.
Right. No, I agree.
Right? So, is it, first of all, do you wanna, we don't have to accept this. We've already approved the document. This went back to the town, at the Board of Selectmen, and there were way more recommendations that, in all fairness, were not included in here. And do you even wanna accept this? We don't have to accept this.
So, what happens if we don't accept it?
We just say we've already signed it.
We could say, we wanna, we prefer to say we've already signed it.
So, why are we looking at this? Did they sign it too?
No. That's the point.
No, they didn't sign it.
Who's they?
Board of Selectmen in Bolton.
There you go. Talk to Dawn.
How do you feel about it? Oh, was that a wrong question?
Don't put him...
No!
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, she can ask whatever she wants. Go ahead.
The way I look at it is, the Board of Selectmen had some additional thoughts on the matter. As Lorraine said, there were far more edits than this to begin with, and most of them ended up going off into a side letter, or, not a side letter, I guess it would be a roles and responsibilities document. And then, what you see there is what the remainder was, that the selectmen said, "Well, let's kick that back to the school, let's ask the chief of police to meet with the superintendent and get her thoughts on whether or not this would be okay." The chief reported back that the superintendent said it was okay, and then it had needed to come back to the school committee for approval or not, so...
Yes, from my lens, we already do the report, and Lynn, I hear what you're saying, but we already do the report. I think the notion is, make sure that the evidence is protected. I agree, it's not that person's individual responsibility, it's the responsibility of whoever's been put in charge of this. So, from my lens, I was looking at this thing, we already kinda do this, so I didn't see it through the same lens that you're looking at it now. I get it, though.
I 100% agree with Lynn.
Wait a second. Let's Susan, and then Kathy, and then, I'm sorry, Neil, we've got lots of comments.
Could there just, is there an opportunity to combine the second and third bullet and just say notify the designated school, or you're gonna say the administration?
Right.
Notify the administration of the existence of the evidence and have them take responsible steps to maintain it?
Where, but this is...
Let's see now, so you have to prove that you notified them?
No, you just have to notify.
Well, then you'd have to have a record of the truth, whether...
Yeah.
I'm looking at this, I'm looking at C and I'm looking at D, and to me, C represents what could be analogous to a policy, and then D to me is analogous to a procedure. So, there's a reporting procedure, and then, if we're talking about the high school, which we are, the principal has to have an expectation for all staff members, and that's where that would be. I'm not sure it belongs here. I think C assumes that. Number two says, there's number one, report the incident, et cetera. Number two, maintain pertinent evidence. So, I think that, it just seems that D is redundant in a way, or overly directive as a part of this, whereas the principal should say, "All right, this is the MOU, or M U O, or whatever it is, and these are my expectations." And just like with reports of bullying or harassment, there's a form you fill up, there's follow-up.
Right.
And everybody knows it.
Yeah.
And so, I just, I think it's...
Unnecessary.
That, I would think so. I think it's micromanaging...
It is.
The administration of the high school. But that's my opinion.
Neil?
So, not to pile on, but I see it as crossing the line. Now, what's happened is, the town is now inserting themselves into the district and how the district employees should be acting with something. I get that they wanna have the police department respond in a certain way, and that we have an agreement how to work with the police department. Non-emergency situations would fall under our prerogative. We would handle it with the advice of the Bolton Police Department, but not go into some stupid agreement about that. That's number one. Does the union have an opinion upon the teachers' reporting? Have they been consulted on this particular thing for the MOU? Because I would think that they would have a very strong opinion on what they have to do as a requirement. And again, it's the town telling the union what they have to do as far as reportability and scoring. I have a problem with that. So, I absolutely, personally myself, will not vote to accept or move this forward.
Okay. Susan?
But the language that we approved in C does say that we're, the teacher or other school employee needs to take those responsible steps to maintain any pertinent physical evidence. We already agreed to that.
But they're the responsible steps that the school's already developed.
Right, so it's the policy. So, now you refer to the school's policy. This agreement is dictating policy to the teachers, to the district, and to the district employees.
So, it's the reasonable steps that you're worried...
It takes it one step too far, where now it's not an agreement, you're specifically saying what's going on. That the agreement, that the part that the selectmen are, and rightly so, are controlling are the police, and how they're going to respond within the high school. But this takes it another step and brings the high school under, well, again, I'm just repeating myself, it's telling the employees what they have to do.
So, would it be fair and reasonable then to say, because I'm hearing that you're not supporting this, and so what I'm hearing you say is, the message we're gonna send back to the town is, no, we're gonna stick with the MOU that we first sent out in June with no additional step, nothing else?
Because C is included in that, correct?
Yes.
We all reviewed it, the attorneys reviewed it, we're all good, and my opinion is, we approved, the point was to have a memorandum of understanding for this function. It was raised by the town. Absolutely, we discussed it, we agreed to it, that work has been done, there's no more over-engineering of the materials.
I have a question. Could it satisfy everybody to simply say for Part D that the superintendent or designee shall cause one, two, and three to happen?
But I think that, I think the issue was...
That way, it's really the administration's hands by agreement.
Go ahead, Neil.
No, I would disagree. I'm not an attorney, but I love to play one, right? So, what we're dealing with here is, again, it's a liability issue on top of that, too, because what we're doing is committing the district to certain protocol that has nothing to do with the police. It has to do with non-emergency. We're committing to our protocol, to the town, right? And if we don't follow that protocol, we're now liable, okay, for any kind of lawsuit that comes our way. This is what our policies are for, this is what the district has their own stuff for. This, again, crosses a line on multiple avenues, in my opinion.
Okay. So, based on this, are there any other comments? I saw Elise raise her hand, and then she hit her hand.
No, I was...
Oh, you were playing with her hair?
My hair.
Oh, I'm sorry, she's playing with her hair.
What if all these other ones...
I don't have any additional...
Why are those in there?
That was, I don't know.
That was just language, as all of us.
But there isn't...
But there's nothing, as far as I'm concerned right now, what you're, the message you're sending is, we're leaving it just as it is, like that's what you're saying. So, as far as I'm concerned, I think, Dawn, that's the message that we're sending back to the Board of Selectmen.
What about the other yellow pieces?
That's what it just said, Neshoba Regional School District, and I think there's nothing wrong with the Neshoba Regional School District. So, if you go back up, we also agree to keep all information disclosed between the parties. I don't even know that you need that, because then you quote the law that regulates it, but, did our attorneys look at this? Did Carrie look at this?
Not the last one, no. Oh, wait, wait, no, I believe she did. I believe she did. I'll have to go back and check my emails to see...
Well, you know what? I need to know that she did look at it. I wouldn't even take any of the, you know, under the reportable incidents, again, designated liaisons from the Neshoba Regional School District and Bolton Police Department, that's fine, that's just identifying us. But I'm not comfortable with that whole section down there, I can't do it.
And I'll look to see if I've got email back from Carrie.
Again, I mean, even between parties, so if we have a non-emergency event that doesn't involve necessarily the police. The other thing is, this is talking about securing evidence and so forth. Now, I know the chief probably took a look at this, but why would we be touching evidence? We'd wanna secure the ground or the area that was affected, not, right?
I don't think the chief meant it in the sense of taking the evidence somewhere, it's just making sure it's not touched until a police officer gets on the scene.
Totally with you, but the way I, if I read it literal, again, it's secure it, put it in a secure area.
It gets back to Lynn's point.
Yeah.
And again, that's liability on us.
So, we're, so, does anybody wanna make a motion to adopt this?
Make a motion not to adopt that, to stick with the first MOU that was... Make a motion not to adopt that, to stick with the first MOU that was put forth last spring.
Well, so we don't even, we don't have to take anything, we're just, we're good with where we are. Okay.
That's the message.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming. Okay, subcommittee reports, budget and warrant. Budget and warrant. Neil?
Oh, yeah. I'm still not, I'm still not connecting with the FinCom budget and warrant thing. Yeah, so we met today, we voted two things. We voted to pass on reports to the school committee, which will be coming forward. It's recommended, recommended reports based on the combination of the forensic audit, MasBo, and really the corrective action plan. So it's us trying to put some end caps on that corrective action plan from last year. So those reports are gonna come forward. They had started in the springtime when we met for our session. And we kind of just flushed them out a little bit over a couple of meetings. And so you'll be seeing them next time. And then we also voted to move forward a bunch of policies, I think sixteen to eighteen policies off the top of my head, that again, fit within the corrective action plan. And what they're doing is moving structure to absorb certain things. And we're going to have a meeting on the twentieth with policy, FinCom and policy. And we need to figure out whether it's actually gonna have to be a school committee meeting because if we have a quorum, I think we have to list it as a school committee meeting? Is that correct?
No, you don't have to list it as a school committee meeting.
So we can still.
You just have to post it.
This five of us?
Just post it.
I just wasn't sure if there was too many, if we needed to.
Who would be there?
Well, both.
Well, if policy and, and B and W was there.
Yeah. All right.
We just, we just posted as a joint subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
I just, I just didn't want to get us in trouble doing something the wrong way.
I get you.
You're not gonna get in trouble, but keep going.
So, so that's, that's pretty much it. And we're gonna take a look at, we have some other things that the administration is going to be getting for us between now and hopefully in the next meeting. And then we're gonna be able to start trucking away.
Cool. Thank you. Ms. Cody, and?
Nothing to report. Our next meeting is next Monday, the 13th.
Okay. Monday, the 13th. And Susan, policy?
We had a little organizational workshop today, which I think was very effective. We just did a little bit of planning. And again, we're gonna meet with budget and warrant, and we meet with Dorothy before the next school committee meeting to finish section.
Wow, you're just trucking on it.
Yeah. I wonder, Neil, if there's any way you can send that list?
Yes, we're, we're going to forward them and put them in the package so that, you know, they're obviously part of the public record.
Awesome. Thank you. Elise, anything on CPAC?
No, the next meeting is next week.
Excellent. And Lynn, the facility advisory committee?
We had a couple of votes. One was to go forward, what were the dates?
November 29th, you're on the next agenda.
So I, I'll let, I'll tell you what we decided to do. And we vote to this end.
So you did your work. Thank you very much.
Nine minutes are up to date.
Awesome, your minutes are up to date. You know, I love that. Any correspondence of note? Consent agenda, assuming that the meeting minutes of October 25th, 2017 warrants of November 10th, 2017, unless there's some, any concerns, those are good to go. Items for next agenda, it's on the calendar, but I'm just gonna read them really quick so you know this is gonna be a chock full meeting. We will be picking up the bylaws again. We have a technology update, we have a pre-K discussion or update, we have a Florence Sawyer School student presentation, an annual audit review. And we're gonna talk about what our next steps are gonna be based on the OPEV discussions that we had. We had, so come prepared for that. Other than that, I think that's the, we're pretty much good to go with the regular session. And Steve?
I just have one request that when we have the technology update, one of the big issues that discussed, discussed at the conference last week was cybersecurity. The school system was hacked, cost them $100,000 in four weeks of work to get everything back going. So I think it should be.
So what's our cyber plan?
Yeah.